Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first thing we're going to discuss tonight is a battery energy storage presentation. This is going to be done by Dr. Joseph Kevin Kelly of CEO of Blue Planet Power. So anyway, go ahead, Dr. Kelly.
All right, excellent. Okay, Liz asked me to give an update on power storage, which is one of the things we specialize in at Crimson Power. Basically, what we do is everything energy related, and that includes storage. Our largest project right now is 100 megawatts in Virginia, and it supports a system for Dominion, the utility down there. 100 megawatts is 100 shipping containers filled with lithium-ion battery. Each one is about 42 feet long, and they're separated daisy chain basically over a period, an area that's about nine acres. And that supports a power plant down in Hopewell, Virginia. And it's also going to support, or help support, 1,200 acres of solar that the Commonwealth is building down there. And we want to bid for that. I own 10% of that, and there's a number of other parties in there. Basically, what that does is that project's about a $112 million project to build out. We got through permitting, and before we even got done permitting, Con Edison bought it. They made us an offer and said, "You guys build it, and we'll buy it from you." And so that was our first. Super large, anything 100 megawatts is super large with regards to battery storage. Now, when you say battery storage, there's a couple of things to think about. There's utility-grade battery storage, and that includes, there's like a land grab in Massachusetts right now, which is simply, if you own land anywhere near a substation, it can be highly valuable. I have a client who is offered for six acres, $1.2 million a year for 20 years with a 1.5% escalator. So they're like $28 million for six acres of land, and it's because it's right near a substation. So wildly valuable. And that substation needs to have a lot of capacity. So if it's 100-megawatt capacity, you can build a big system there.
Just one question for reference. How many houses building, consider it as 1-megawatt power generate? Just so we have a proper reference.
Oh, yeah, you're looking at something about 10 megawatts.
Bruce, could I ask you to speak into the microphone?
Oh, sure.
If you let him get into the recording.
Sure. Absolutely. So if you look at a system that's about 10 megawatts, you're going to look at about 5,000 households. So, and you can multiply that again by 10 to get 100 megawatts. So you're talking really big. One of the questions was bylaws originally. You definitely want to have bylaws when it comes to large-scale batteries. Heard some people talking about the Tesla that burnt up and burns at 2,500 degrees, takes a long time to put out, and then once you put it out, catches back on fire. It's a, it's pretty rare. It's, you can hit the car in the front, backside, and you're fine, but if you puncture the batteries set from underneath, like in that particular accident, that's a problem. What these are is they're put on earthquake pads. They are a cube system typically. They're a lot more advanced than your early versions of large-scale batteries, which were simply a shipping container with a lot of battery sets put in there. So nowadays, when you get these cubes, like the ones on the screen, they're, they have really thick walls, which prevent fires spreading cube to cube. They have Halon systems, so as soon as something happens, Halon's dispersed, and they're all computerized. So a lot more sophisticated than the early versions were. But that's all important to understand when, if somebody comes and says, "I want to build battery storage." So that's limited because it's only going to be close to a substation. And so that's easy here, you know, we know where that is. And the way the financiers are financing these systems, they want to be no more than one parcel away from the substation. So if you're a mile up the road, it's probably too far to go, because we're going to have to run lines, and that's going to be somewhere between a million and $2 million a mile to run to the substation. That, that'll probably kill a deal. So the finances want to be at least one, no more than one parcel away. So we represent probably in Massachusetts about 35 large-scale parcels that are good candidates for substations right now. So that's basically what they look at, like the technology is very simple. It's daisy chaining battery storage.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I love mentioning about the batteries, but don't each one of these things use an inverter of gas power to generate?
They have inverters, yeah.
It looks like it's one for every two stations?
Yeah, good point. Yeah. What they do is, yeah, it depends on how they're set up. Some are set up on the heels of a large-scale or along with a large-scale solar array. So one of the issues you have with either wind or solar is it's relatively inefficient, saying that as an entity that builds a lot of solar. Relatively inefficient, and what that means basically is, obviously, at night it doesn't work. During the day, if a cloud goes by, it's not outputting energy. So what it actually needs is a way to store its energy, and that's where the batteries come in. So that's the, the other flavor of batteries you'll see. One is simply large-scale solar connected to a substation to keep the substation, to give the utility or the ISO some level of stability.
I understand that, but it does, the engine, you know, I mean, we all know how loud generators can be, even the nice sophisticated ones, but does this run 24 hours? How often does the engine run?
No, the batteries are quiet, obviously.
The engine themselves?
Inverters are quiet. You wouldn't even hear them, yeah. They're, all the inverters I'm doing in this case is taking the DC power, converting it to AC, and sending it to the street. Depending on how it's set up, it could be a battery system that is also backed up, and then eventually sending it to the street. It's no more loud than a solar array inverter is. Same technology. So if you have any solar arrays or solar on buildings, it's exactly like an inverter that solar would have, no difference. Now, obviously, that's going to be the largest stuff. The next, what you're going to see is, oh, actually, go back one. You can keep on that one, that's good. The other version of this you'll see is somebody builds a live-scale solar array, and they want some support, and they may come in and say, "I need a megawatt or two megawatts or five megawatts to support my solar array." And so all that is, is less cubes. So now you're moving away from substations, and it could be anywhere, any field, any solar field, and it can be done after the fact. So if you have a five-acre solar field or a 20-acre solar field, it can be done after the fact you add these, because for the owner, it adds value. So they'll, they'll look at something like this. And it's being subsidized by the government, so that's another reason why they want to participate in this. So that's two versions of large-scale batteries you'll see. If you go to the next slide. In 2020, the SMART program in Massachusetts, Governor Baker, in this case, passed legislation with regard to solar as part of the SMART program that basically said, "If you want to build ground or solar on the rooftop, if it's over 500 KW system size, it needs to have a battery." And that is something that a lot of companies out there are having a lot of trouble with, because if you think about size of 500 KW, it's not a big array. It's about a rooftop, less than 50,000 square feet, or it's on the ground, it's about two and a half acres. So that's a small system relatively, and now that needs a battery, needs battery backup.
Why is that?
I think it's more of a push on the utility side, because if you think of how the utility delivers energy, it comes from the power plant, they deliver it, and there's recipients, and it's all scheduled, and nothing stored. And in this case, you have these little power plants all around the countryside, like, let's say, there's one on the rooftop, and it's Sunday and closed, so no using, you know, using the energy, you dump it back to the grid. So now the utility says, "I need to deal with this now. How do I schedule it? And by the way, it's cloudy now, so now there's nothing to schedule." Or it gets sunny when they expected it to be cloudy. Now they have energy, how do they schedule that? And so the utility pushes pretty hard on battery backup, because they want you to have solar, they want you to use your solar, they just don't want you to send it back to the street. And so in this case, if you have a battery, you charge your own batteries, and if you want to use solar energy at night, it's the energy from your solar that you charged your batteries with. So that's kind of the idea. And so your own storage. And so larger projects are the ones that can support the battery cost. That was the logic behind it. What we're seeing is because of the cost of smaller batteries, what's happening in the marketplace is you'll see a lot of applications for like 499 KW systems. They're just under the size limitation, so they don't have to get batteries, because the entities that are building these solar systems, they don't want to buy batteries, because what that means is the owner of the building, say, it's a manufacturing company, they have to pay the cost of the batteries, and the value of the battery is going to be, if you load, you know, you turn everything on at the same time in your, say, machine shop, you get a high demand, and you pay based on your peak demand. So if your battery kicks in, it can kind of smooth out demand. It's not very easy to show value in exactly how much that saved a client, kind of a moving target. So batteries are difficult to show value, although we certainly do. It's, it's something that's not as black and white as you, you get solar energy and you're on a power purchase agreement, and you're paying 10 cents versus, you know, 40 cents at the utility. So there's quite a difference there. So that's your third flavor of batteries you're going to see, is small batteries, they could be 500 KW, they could be a megawatt, give or take. If you go to the next slide, it shows an example of what these batteries look like. Much smaller, much more like a ground-mount transformer, maybe a little bigger. Same technology, most, or all of these have Halon systems, so they're relatively safe. You know, something to think about, fire department needs to be up to speed on all this, which I'm sure they probably are already, but the more batteries you have around the town, the more they need to know where they are and basically the details of the battery. Because like I mentioned, they can burn at 2,500 degrees, and that's something that needs to be training on how to put them out, which I'm sure they probably already do that. But it's important to know what you're working with when you arrive at a location and there's a problem. And it's not just a big battery field, it could be any business with a solar array over 500 KW. And it could be a hotel, it could be a manufacturing company, anything. So if you go to the next slide, and ask questions as I go, feel free. Different types of batteries. Most of the batteries you're going to see are lithium-ion batteries, much like in a car, like a electric vehicle. When you get to really, really big batteries, you'll see things like lithium-ion, which is a lot less expensive, because when you're doing a whole field of batteries, lithium-ion would be extremely expensive. So if you go to lithium-ion, I-R-O-N, instead of I-O-N, it's less expensive. It's all semantics in how the battery is built, that's all. And the price per KW will change wildly based on the technology you choose. If you go to the last slide, this is, gave kind of an overview of areas. I looked at it like if I was creating a bylaw, what I look at, and obviously, battery storage management systems, you'll see BE, SMS quite a bit. So an electronic system that protects the storage system from operating outside the perimeters. And this is basically what's going to handle something out of the ordinary, like a fire, something typically overheating, that's what I'm concerned about. That information's important to know. Dedicated use of buildings, if it's in a building, you want the battery to be the only thing in the building. Early days of batteries, people always wanted to put them in like basements of buildings and different things like that, almost like a furnace. It's not something you want to put in a building, or at least I don't believe that you should. I know Tesla sells their battery set, the residential battery set, the wall-mount unit, that's made to put in your household. Something to consider, it also burns at extreme temperatures. So things like obviously the site plan application, dedicated use of the buildings, whole sections about non-participating properties in residences versus participating properties, the ones making the money versus the ones not making the money. Is there a sound? In this case, there's not a sound. What's the downside of being beside a battery, I guess? Emergency operations plan, they all have to file those. Obviously, you want that as part of your zoning bylaw requirements. Everything very similar to solar. Everything like fencing, signage, lighting, vegetation and cutting setbacks, screen and visibility mitigation for disruption of various types. If there's a failed battery, a process to have it removed within 30 days.
Could you go back to the microphone?
Oh, okay, sorry, can't see. Let's see. I'll look on here, because there you go. And then things like decommissioning plans, a decommissioning fund, the owner-operator must maintain surety acceptable to the town, proof of liability insurance, obviously, abandonment and exactly what that means, fire safety plans, commissioning plans. The, I'd argue that the need of a strong bylaw for batteries is a lot more important than even solar, something that ought to be considered. But there's multiple flavors, as I mentioned. We didn't even talk about the residential ones, and which you will see those, because they're being marketed right now. So batteries work, they work well, even the large scale, but there needs to be some level of oversight. And, you know, the town's the one, that's where that rests. So, any questions? That's a lot all at once, but.
Are there primary use for reducing peak demand or is it outages? What's kind of the, the main demand for them?
Main demand, well, main demand in Massachusetts tends to be, you have them because you have to have them if your solar's a certain size, and then you kind of back into an approach where you can save money for the client based on, like, peak shaving. But what's happening is, a battery you'll use to peak shave is relatively small, because you're kicking it in on a small little piece of the day. The batteries that you're building based on, that are similar to the size of the array you're building, whether it's a 25% battery, for example, are large batteries. So it, it's getting on the, run your facility or a certain portion of your facility on the battery, you know, which is, is great. It's an expensive way to have backup. Diesel generators are less expensive, for example. So there's a big difference between clients that are trying to peak shave with a small battery and the batteries we're talking about. You know, the batteries you're going to see are bigger. They're going to be half a megawatt, a megawatt, or multiple 1-megawatt batteries.
All right. So for instance, there's a substation on Plymouth Street. I assume it's owned by National Grid. Is National Grid going to be the more likely that person who's going to be proposing this versus, you know, Cape Cod Lumber, which has an array on its roof?
Nope. It would be a company like us, that would come and marry the landowners up with the opportunity.
Yeah.
And show them the value. It could be, depending on the substation, it could be the utility, or it could be the ISO, the independent system operator, if it's big enough. And coming up with a value to show what the backup is worth at that particular substation is basically a mathematical exercise, relatively simple, to just show the excess capacity. And all we're really doing is, if you've heard of blackouts in Hawaii, because they fully embrace solar, there's so much solar out there that clouds go by, you can have a blackout or brownout. So the way to get around that, you know, and building so much solar, is battery backup, because now we have that, a buffer between the solar energy that's off and on and storage of that energy. So it makes the system reliable. And this is also in conjunction with car charging. I own a company that, Blue Planet, and Blue Planet is owning 2,000 car charging stations around the US, in particular, New England, New York, Mid-Atlantic to start. And we've got about 10% of EverSource's first round of EV chargers that are coming out in Massachusetts, and that's another, a draw of energy. And so there, there needs to be some, some way to support the system that is obviously years old and make it reliable.
So we're not talking parking lot charger packs? Like, this wouldn't be put in the Target parking lot and, you know, attached to 10 EVs?
If, no, no. If you, well, if you do, actually, that raises a good question. If you do DC chargers at Target in the parking lot, then there's DC batteries that are stored, all of that. If you see like Tesla chargers, you'll see an area that's like a fenced-in area, and that has a big battery there. So you already have batteries all around you, and it is similar. And with the new program that came out, it was released by the Department of Energy, or the Public Utility Commission in Massachusetts on the last day of last year. That is, $400 million was dedicated to EV charging in Massachusetts. Half for EverSource, half for National Grid, which they'll disperse over the next four years. And there's a sizable amount for DC chargers. So DC chargers, you'll see more of those around.
But that's not what these are?
No. No, these are only the batteries, the DC chargers are the batteries.
Okay.
Integrated in the charger. Now, if you build, let's say, a solar canopy system in a, in a large parking lot like a Target, you're over the 500 KW, so you need pretty sizable batteries.
And the batteries are used to power Target properties, or the grid, you know, kind of to feed the grid itself?
It would be used to store the energy when Target's not actually using the power.
Okay.
Like if it was closed, because you look at it like the utility doesn't want you to send the energy back to the grid.
Right.
And so that's what it would be used for primarily.
Okay.
So you'll see more and more of those as well.
So, you know, obviously, this depends on the size of it, but, you know, so if we lose power in a storm, this isn't going to provide power until the lines are fixed?
Depends on the size of the battery with the facility.
Okay.
If you're talking about the ones we originally talked about, you know, 100 megawatts, that'll power the town. If you're talking about something that's, if you have a megawatt of solar and you have canopies, and you have a battery associated with that, it's, it's enough to run primary services.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not, this isn't battery backup for when the town loses power in a hurricane?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's going to the grid on the first version we talked about. Now, the other thing is, these batteries can be connected with microgrids, and a microgrid is nothing more than like a software system that regulates all your energy. So if you have solar on the roof here, typically, if there's a blackout in town, a power loss, you can use the energy from the solar. The problem is, the solar field can energize the grid, and if there's someone working on the lines who thinks there's a blackout, all of a sudden, it's energized, it could be electrocuted. Now, with a microgrid, it's a smart technology, which shuts down that connection to the street, and once the grid's up on the street, it opens it up again, but it allows you to use your solar power as a battery backup, which everyone thinks they can use, or a lot of people think they can. But unless they have a microgrid, they can't. But the microgrid's also a battery. That's the idea.
All right.
Tesla does that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Tesla's probably the leader in anything you mentioned that has a battery. It usually came from Tesla or is, is a copy of what Tesla's already doing.
That's what I have in my house, that's three Tesla batteries.
Yeah.
On the power without, it doesn't go all over the town. It's specified right for my house.
Yeah.
It's 50 KW.
Yeah.
It'll run a day or two.
Yeah.
You don't want to turn on your stove or any heavy uses or anything, like the lights stay on it.
Yeah.
It doesn't make a sound. And then residential, a little different than what you're describing. Tesla works on the microgrid with the electric company. So, they have a right to, you sign a contract for five years. So, you get the price of battery, the government pays a third, and then you have, then you can sign this form. And for five years, you're under contract. So, they have the right to open your batteries that will go out into the grid. So, on a hot day in the summer, they can draw it 60 times a year. That's it. Sixty, that's a lot. Sixty. So, when you get a 90-degree day, you don't know when it's coming. But from 2:00 to 6:00, they can open the, and your battery starts outputting. So, mine can do 5 KW each. They hold 13 and a half KW. So, the output, at any given moment, can be 5 KW. That's 5,000 watts.
Okay.
So, 1,000 watts, one kilowatt, for what you pay for an electric bill, 1,000 watts. You guys are old enough to know what a 100-watt light bulb is. Hour, it's only deep enough to run six watts. So, your 100-watt light bulb would run a ton of, 10 100-watt light bulbs per hour. That's your kilowatt. That's like a gallon of gas. When he's talking megawatts, you're talking, what, 1,000 kilowatts? 1,000 kilowatts, perfectly. So, now, when they're drawing that 60 times, they go by your average kilowatt. So, I just got a check for this year, one year, for $2,600. And last year was like $2,300. So, it's going to be between $2,000 and $3,000 a year. And it will be for five years. So, what happens in residential is, if it works out, and then the electric company pays, I think, you know, two cents a kilowatt or whatever. It's another little data. So, you have a little income there. Then you get this big amount from Tesla. And then you get reduction one-third, like, you know, instead of the government. Bottom line is, when it's all calculated out, you pretty much eliminate the cost of that. So, it becomes a no-brainer. So, you have night, though, the power goes out, you don't hear a sound. You don't even have to do the power without looking around the neighborhood and saying, gee, no lights up there.
That's over five years.
Uh, five years. It'll be interesting at the end of five years to see if they want to redo that, because it's only a benefit to everybody. So, when my battery's open up, I might be using, so if I'm the air conditioner in the house, I might be using the big house, so probably 4 KW, if they're all running. So, you take four away from 15, you've got 11 KW that goes out into the grid. So, maybe my neighbors here, some of my neighbors are being taken care of with my batteries, but for two hours. But it's during that heat that everybody wants that power. And the grids, the voltage is going down on the grid, and they're strained to keep up. Then they start opening these batteries, and that's that microgrid we're talking about.
Right. That's an excellent point. It's, the technology allows it to get down to the residential level. That's demand response. So, when the grid needs it, you give it in. In the old days, what happens is, we'd go to, like, hospitals. Like, we had, at one point, the hospital in Plymouth, and we had the Rhode Island Convention Center in Dunkin' Arena. And the idea was, when it's 90 degrees and you get a call, you shut off, like, banks of elevators and shut off air conditioning systems and things like that. You gave back. And those entities will get large checks. It was hard to get that down to a residential level until you could come up with a smart way to do it through a system. And now, we have systems that, like, we put in lighting systems now that have the ability to connect to the utility. And when the utility needs it, they will automatically do a demand-response call. And the way they do it is, they'll dim your lights from 100% to 75%. And you hardly even notice it. And so, it's easy. Because normally, a lot of clients, when you call to curtail energy, they didn't do it. And that was a problem, too. So, much smarter program, that's a very advanced setup residentially, on the average residential. That's like cutting-edge stuff. It'd be great if more people had that. Over time, they will. But that's definitely an early adopter benefit. And the incentives early on are really attractive. They won't be as attractive as we go when more people jump on the bandwagon. But still, as of now, it's a smart way to go.
Any idea how many substations there are in Abington?
I think there is one that I know of. I could look that up, find out, and identify. The key questions would be where they are, what the capacity is. Is it a 50-megawatt, 100-megawatt? And there's not as much interest in, say, 20-megawatt stations, because the battery sets are more expensive. So, there's less interest with financiers until you get to 50-plus. Pretty simple questions would be where they are, capacity, and then who owns the land that's right around it? Because that land would be very valuable. And so, we do a lot of work with companies that have gravel pits and things like that. And they basically look for second lives of these things. And if you're a candidate for large-scale battery storage, much more attractive than solar. You wouldn't even deal with solar anymore. So... So, that's basically what you're looking at. Coming up with bylaws, relatively simple. There's some pretty good ones out there already. I saw the town of Mendon had some, I think, pretty strong bylaws out there. I'm certainly worth looking at. You don't have to reinvent the wheel in this case, there's enough out there that makes sense. Any other questions? Excellent points.
I have one. Rick touched on it. So, I have land study, and I put two or three of these containers on there. And it's a private investor that does it. Where's the electricity going? And do they have a deal? They're just selling it back to the grid? Or, like Rick said, is that going to power the town when there's an outage?
Well, yeah. Eventually, it does, because it's going to the substation. Going right to the heart of where the energy's all coming from. And it does help eliminate brownouts or blackouts, because if you look at it like there's a bunch of solar arrays all kicking their energy in into the grid, and they're unreliable, this adds reliability to that substation. So, it makes that one substation stronger. And as far as dollar amounts we've seen, like I said, I've seen it all over the place. It's been hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, where it's multiple times what the value of solar would be. And it only takes up a relatively small area, and you don't have to clear trees. It's one of the benefits. You don't have to clear cut like you would with solar.
Are they still looking at vehicle to grid?
What's that?
Vehicle to grid.
I haven't seen much of that.
No?
Yeah.
It's a concept that would help, similar to my idea of going to use Japan.
Yeah, yeah. Like the Ford commercial with the F-150. Yeah, I don't, I don't see much of that.
Probably just looking at how...
Yeah, we don't deal with residential. So, that's why we don't get into that closely.
What's expected, like, a neighboring or running town were to ban these batteries? Does that make a benefit to Abington? Does it hurt that town? I'm assuming wherever these batteries are, like, let's say, Whitman. There's a substation on the Avenue and Whitman line. And Abington allows the batteries, Whitman doesn't. And there's a blackout in that area. The batteries that are in Abington will feed...
On the substation.
Right. Which will feed Whitman or Abington.
Yeah, the electricity doesn't know a difference.
Exactly. So, what does the town get out of allowing these batteries?
It's a taxable entity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a, I'm assuming, the private battery owner company, who wants to make a deal with the landowner, whether it's a lease or a purchase of the land, let's say it's a lease, they're going to want a long-term, they're going to want a 20-year, 40-year lease?
Yes, 20, 25, yeah.
Okay, and I'm the landowner, I don't want to give you that long a lease. So, and, you know, what if, what if I said I'm offering anything more than 10? Can you not make your money back in this town? Is that the issue?
It'd be more difficult, that's all. You know, just like solar, there are some solar arrays out there that are like 10-year deals. But the deal, the price that the client gets is less, that's all. Because there's only so much money to work with. So, I've seen some 10s, 110. I've seen Stonehill College has about almost seven megawatts. We built all that over the years, car canopies and ground. The ground mount there's 15 years, and that was probably one of the shortest we've seen.
Each one of those batteries, about the size of a trailer, is how many megawatts?
That's 1 megawatt. And they cost about $1 million each.
Really?
Yeah. So, like, yeah, your 100 megawatts is, it's about $1 million in batteries, plus everything else you have to do. It comes out to 110 million, 115 million for that system.
Last question. Is it reasonable to assume, much like other technologies, that 10 years now, these will be smaller and more efficient?
Oh, hopefully, they will be, yeah. Just like in your cars, electric vehicles, you're going to have less batteries, smaller batteries, and quicker to charge.
They're working on that electronic data, that it comes to fruition. It's supposed to be a game changer, but it hasn't happened yet, but it's still working. Do they have, like, a bond or something? When these companies, 25 years goes by, the lease is gone, and you would say, I'm sure it's written in the contract that they have to clean up. And I'm sure it happens, waiting by anything.
That's part on the list here.
But what happens if they fail and they walk away?
Just like solar.
Because the town would want to be settled.
Just like solar, yeah. Like, like a bond, and that could be pulled, and it could be cleared out.
Okay. So, it's a double backup if they fail, it's not going to be struck on the town to clean it up?
Yeah, like with solar, we see a lot of companies go under here and there. If, like, a town has net metering credits coming in, oftentimes, you can look back and, you know, the engineering company's gone, the company that built everything is gone, company that owned it originally is gone. But the one collecting the money still, they're around still. You know, they never go away. So, they're always going to be there.
I have two questions for you. One is, how would we determine, how would we determine what the bond would be? We've kind of made up our own when it comes to commercial and residential projects around here. But how would we address that? Because I don't even know what the bond would cover.
You could figure out, you'll have to come up with a way of, like, a recognized marketable price to take, you know, solar off a field per megawatt or battery storage out. And, you know, it's something we'd have to come up with, like, a formula for. But then again, we probably wouldn't be reinventing it. It's probably already been answered. I just don't have that answer off the top of my head, because, you know, we haven't even thought of taking these things out yet, because we, they barely even got in place yet. So, that's a great question.
You don't know what kind of reputable people you're going to get involved with. The other question was, you just mentioned about not having to clear cut for these batteries. I mean, I'll take the extreme. Could you actually put it in, put these into the woods?
Technically, you could. Yeah, we're, we're looking at places now that are cranberry bogs, on the uplands of the cranberry bogs. There's a lot out there right now, dual-use cranberry bog solar. We're looking at a few of them. We're struggling with how to approach that, because a lot of cranberry bog owners want to keep on farming, but they also want to have solar. But they don't want a dry harvest, because it's more cumbersome. They want a wet harvest. And now, you're putting a bunch of solar panels in the water, basically, that they're flooding. So, there's a lot of challenges. So, we've been kind of dealing with that. But the uplands to cranberry bogs are perfect places to put the batteries. And you don't have to have them in, like, a perfect square. You can, you can line them up anywhere. They're like blocks, that's all. Look at them like, they look more like a, like a square space capsule nowadays, with, like, blinking lights on them, than they do shipping containers. And you can just arrange them however the land allows. So, pretty simple.
Thank you.
Not a lot of logic here. Not a lot different than lining up a bunch of D cell batteries and daisy chaining them. That's all that's happening here. So, any other questions? Okay, excellent points. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. If you have any follow-up questions, you have my card. Anytime. I assist with the energy for the town, so I'm always available, anytime.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Moving on.
One second, I'm just going to shut that. Okay.
I think the Celtics are on at 7:30. Oh.
Thank you.
Liz, do we have any minutes?
We do not.
No minutes? Are there any formates tonight?
There are not.
Four mays? Because we have a few minutes before our next thing.
What are those drawings on the table?
That's Rockland Street, chain farm path.
Oh, okay, so it's not...
No, you have to sign them, but it's, it's not a covenant required, because it's a private road.
Okay. Sorry, sorry.
Right, John Riley.
Any correspondence?
Let's see, we got a letter from Department of Housing and Community Development determining that our interim compliance has been met on MBTA communities.
Really great.
Yep. So, they received and approved our action plan. And we received technical assistance, a technical assistance grant, which OCPC will be administering that. I'm going to send you guys tomorrow. The toolkit the state has put up on the website, so you can look at that. You've all received your invitation to the selectmen's meeting next week. That was it?
Is that a way to Mr. Soper returns before we resume? Liz, you said that we didn't have a copy of the zoning boards of appeals, kind of?
It's right here. I didn't make copies of it, because the only thing on it, outside of the response we're still waiting for on Birch Street, is 907 Bedford Street, which you're acting on tonight. So, I just assume I'll board them, whatever your decision is on the plan tonight. But if you want to talk about Birch Street, I actually have an opinion from Town Council on that. And she says, "With regard to Birch Street, in my opinion, the town is not bound by an approval, by an approved unconstructed subdivision." by an approved unconstructed subdivision.
That was it?
That was it. With regard to Birch Street, in my opinion, the town is not bound by an approved unconstruction, unconstructed subdivision.
So that's not grandfathered, basically?
It's not grandfathered.
Besides impact paper streets, though, because there's a whole bunch that went through the town that were never built. So, in the future, do we don't have to abide by them, or follow them, or?
I don't have that answer. I mean, most of the time, if somebody wants to build on a paper road, the town has to abandon the paper road if it's part of an approved subdivision. But this never got built.
Correct, there's a lot that didn't get built. But we still treat the paper road as if it was built, in some ways.
Yeah.
Like, we don't allow someone to build on a paper road, paper street.
Right, because people on both sides have the right to use to the middle of the paper road.
Right.
We still have a few minutes before 6:05. Another action item would be the review and vote on the town report submission.
So do you guys just want me to email that to the zoning board of appeals, what town council said? As your response?
Please.
Okay.
Would you put a timeframe on that after it was approved?
She did not. What I read to you is what I got.
She did?
Nope, she just said.
Do we actually need to vote on this, Liz?
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Someone like to make a motion to accept the report of the planning board?
I'll make a motion.
Someone second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, gentlemen.
On the bond things?
Review, request to release 2022 interest on McHugh Circle bond?
So I have two things. I have the interest on McHugh Circle. Mr. Rourke requi- requested that. That's in the voucher folder. It was $102.
Motion to deny?
Oh, I'm serious.
Discussion?
I say we've already been through that technically, we can't, right? We could, I guess.
Well, there's been a motion to deny. Anyone want to second that? Hearing done. Would someone make a motion to accept this?
Do we have a motion to pass over?
Someone want to second that?
I'll second it. Can you? That's where we talk.
So the motion's been made to pass over and seconded. All those in favor, passing over?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's been made and seconded, and votes been approved to pass over this.
How was that, though?
I did vote for it.
You did?
I did not.
Okay, so three to...
I heard it, Bruce.
How did you go?
We're in favor.
You voted in favor of passing it?
Technically, we've been down this road. Technically, we really can, but I guess we can.
So four to one. I just need to know. I will let him know.
Didn't deny it. But it's accrued interest, it needs to be released. We think it's appropriate or not.
The second one was the return of the bond to Cape Cod Lumber for the showroom project. And I emailed Dave to make sure that that was all done, because things were kind of out of sync. And he's going to get together with their engineer and make sure that everything is done, but he said to go ahead and do that. But since we're doing this on February 6, and we won't meet again until March 6, there's just a sheet of paper in there for you guys to sign. It's his actual email, and I can give that to the treasurer and the town accountant to release the money at the end of the month.
So it would be pending on?
Pending on Dave.
Dave Johnson's.
Final approval. Yep, but I didn't want to wait till March 6.
I, I get it. I'll make that motion based on final approval from the town engineer.
Someone want to second this, please?
I'll second it.
A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. It being 6:05, site plan review 657 Bedford Street continued. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Riley, representing the applicant, Tamar Jan, Tamar Jan Real Estate LLC, regarding 657 Bedford Street. As you know, this is a pending site plan review application. And I submitted a letter to you to describe, give you an update on where we were with it. As you know, this has been continued, because we were working on a couple of things. One was making sure the fire department was satisfied. They wanted, we looked at a couple of different driveway systems, had some good productive meetings with the fire department. We have the driveway system down. Everything works great. It's a one-way loop. The second thing we were waiting on was, because it's on Route 18, we have to work with Mass DOT as far as curb cut permitting and all. That permit application has been filed. Mass DOT doesn't work quickly, but it is processing through. In the meantime, our engineer has been working, updating the plans. They were going to meet just before Christmas, but our engineer and his wife caught COVID. Then after Christmas, Dave Johnson was on a little vacation, so they did, as my letter said, finally, we had a meeting downstairs, and I attended the meeting with the two engineers on the 26th. They went over everything on the plan, and essentially, the layout hasn't changed. But Dave Johnson and Dan Orwig, the two engineers, went through a list of some, basically a lot of notations and calculations that he wanted either clarified, corrected, whatnot. And at the end of the meeting, I said, well, what would you prefer? Should we bring that plan with the unedited editions here, knowing that it wasn't ready, ready for approval? Or would you rather use the time to work on fixing it, and then submit the final, final plan to you at the March 6 meeting? Dave suggested the latter. Why have two meetings when we can do one? I know the board is anxious to kind of get this resolved, as am I, but we thought that was the most efficient use of your time, and not really my time, because I'm here anyhow. But, so we're asking for a continuance to your next meeting in March. And at that point, we hope that Dave and Dan will have everything finalized, and you'll have a plan to approve.
Any more discussion on this?
No, I can see it didn't do it right, so.
Other than the fact that it's been quite some time.
It has.
They're still working.
Yeah, and at this point, Mass Highway, Mass DOT probably won't have even issued their paperwork by the time we even get to you in March, but it's going to be at the risk of the applicant at that point. We're going to ask for the approval here, and then we'll have to wait for Mass DOT. It's beyond the 25% approval process, the way they do it, 25, 50, 75.
Someone want to make a motion to continue this?
Some moved?
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'll see you in March.
We have a couple of minutes left before 6:10.
Do you want to do Robert English Way, Mr. Kennedy's here?
Let's do Robert English Way. Mr. Kennedy?
Good evening. Jason Kennedy, Robert English Way. I was informed by Liz on January 11, there were some concerns about stormwater. That was news to me. I've been before the board, before, during the approval process. We had to get some unresolved covenants completed, and I was never informed by the board that we were required to go to stormwater. The plan was approved in 2018, and stormwater was adopted after the full plan was approved. And I think we've come to terms that we'll have to comply with the stormwater. There are a couple of waivers that we might look for, but it was really frustrating, that approach from the board, to not bring it up during the meetings that I was present, and I was present at zoning board meetings, where we had the lots released from the floodplain, and to request the building inspector to do a stop work order on the existing project.
Stop, you're right, Dan.
Nope, that's not.
The board never asked.
I saw it on the meeting. Okay.
They never asked him to do a stop work order or a cease and desist. I CC'd him on emails, because he is stormwater enforcement.
Okay, I'd have to disagree with that, Liz.
All those emails. Okay, you can agree to disagree, but I.
I got an email from you around 9 o'clock, the morning after the meeting, which was January 11. I was going about my business. I said, you know, I'm going to go take a look at the site before I go to the planning board, or your office. So I went by the site, and we have these stop work orders on our equipment, from the town of Abington. It's to our board, says no permits. Okay.
That's from the building inspector.
This is from the town of Abington.
Okay, that's the building commissioner issues, and the planning board can't issue.
Okay, so I went into the building department, and I said, hey, what's going on? And he said, oh, the planning board came down here and was stomping their feet and pounding their chest that I need to do enforcement. So I said, well, what's the bylaw that we're violating? He said, I don't know, I just needed to get you in here. I said, well, Liz has my cellphone number. Could have called me. I did get the email, but I was, I wanted to make sure, I, this was completely news to me. So Mr. Carmichael said, I'll, he said, take the, take the stop work orders down. He gave me a cellphone, and for some reason, the next day, he either quit or was let go. I don't know what happened, but it's, all this seems very unreasonable. You know, I was in front, I've come to your office many times.
And you and I had this conversation in my office.
I thought you'd say that, Liz.
Where you, I said to you, we have a new stormwater bylaw, you need to look at that. And you told me you didn't have to, because your lawyer told her, told you it was a small project.
We were under four lots.
Under five house, under four lots, that's what you said.
Yeah.
So you didn't have to do it, and I said, I think you should still take a look at it.
And that was one of your first or second trips through my office. Okay, that's a good point. And I, I went to your office many times after that.
You did.
What about when I was in front of the board?
Where are we at with this?
Town council says he has to comply with our stormwater bylaw, because it's not a zoning bylaw, it's a general law.
I mean, we've already.
Somebody might ask the building commissioner to go look at it. Maybe things went a little further than you would have liked to. Bottom line is, in some ways, somehow, you need to conform with a, with a stormwater.
It just seems rather unfair, Rob, that I purchased a project, subject to the conditions that the planning board endorsed, and that the project complied to, and now, after purchasing, after we started construction, we have the road, I have a contract with the bank, I have, we have all these cost line items that you planned for, like the $80,000 water fee for the town of Abington. I planned on that. I didn't plan on having an engineer review, redesign, get additional costs from my site guy. That's not fair. I already, I was already here.
I didn't say it was fair. I don't know what the legal.
But why would you guys come after us like that? Someone came on our property and started taking pictures, asking about flags on an abutting property that I don't even own. And we're over here minding our business, we're following the conservation order of conditions that were required, the plan that you guys approved, and then all of a sudden, this is how we get treated? This is not fair. It's not fair to me or anybody else that had a project approved. I don't know what, why we were treated like this.
What's project, is this project?
It's Robert English Way.
Yeah.
It's off of McHugh Circle.
Oh, that one down there. Oh, oh, the clearing of the land and all that. Oh, okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we.
All right, I thought we were talking about something different. All right, yeah.
So I received a complaint, and acting upon that, I asked conservation to go out and check those flags.
A complaint from, from who?
Only a board member, a board member.
A board member that lives in that neighborhood, right?
Who said they received a complaint from a resident?
That's funny, because I didn't get a call about a complaint from a resident, or there's nothing in writing about a complaint from a resident.
I, I didn't get it from the resident, I got it from a board member. People in this town often call the people who represent them.
So the bottom line is, where are you at with that? Did they completely stop you from doing work up there?
He said we could pull the stop work order and continue working.
So we're working on the stormwater management? That's something new to us.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't know the legalities, whether or not you need to comply or not, but town council says you have. You have to. You're still working. I would assume you can work on this. I guess my next question is, you worked on it at all, and what kind of, what kind of timeline is that?
We haven't worked on it at all, Rob, and it seems like we'll be going backwards to do so for the reasons that I just said.
We can't go against town council, so.
But why was it even, why were we even challenged like this? Like, we were literally complying with the plan that you guys approved.
It didn't, it didn't come from us, it came from somebody complaining, and then all of a sudden, everything starts to materialize that, you know, not, not someone ought to get you, if that's what you infer.
I was in front of you guys, and you didn't say anything about it. And then we start the project, after we close, and my purchase and sale was specifically upon all approvals, which we waited until the zoning board, and Rick, I know you are on that board, too.
No, I'm not.
I thought you were at that meeting that night.
No, I don't go to zoning board meetings.
We, we went to the zoning, had those three lots released, they're in the floodplain, and then we purchased it that following day. Now I get this requirement for all these different costs and time. And it's not that easy, Rob, because what if we already had, like, the retention basin built? Then we'd have to enlarge it if that's what it requires, and we have to spend all this money that, that we didn't expect. This is my partner, Andrew, I think he'd like to speak.
Quick question, did we get the covenant filed for this property?
Town council stated the covenant that exists is sufficient, but the covenant did not change yet, so covenant's still under Mento, right?
I'm not sure.
I think it's Mento. I'm not sure either.
We purchased it from Mento, so I, I'm not sure if.
I don't want to speak out of term, but I, the covenant's running with the land, not the landowner.
Right, but was it filed by, previously, or are we still back in that same situation?
No, that, that all got resolved from last summer, like, last August, September. The Rourke, Mento, all of that got all resolved, except I think that last lot still hasn't changed yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So Mr. Rourke still owns that corner lot, as far as I know, and then the other four lots, it's four, not five, right?
Correct.
Went from Rourke to Mento to Kennedy.
Yes.
And yours happened in December, December?
My, my purchase?
Yeah.
Around that time?
Yeah.
I think it might have been early December.
So I'll tell you how it started, is that I received a call from an abutter, and saying, why are the pink flags up on the sewer easement? I said, I don't know, it's a good question. But since I don't trust anybody involved with this project, going back three ownerships, I said, I'm going to go up and take a peek. Never stepped foot on your property, stepped foot on the sewer easement, saw the flags, sent a couple photos to Liz and said, just curious what's happening here. That's how it started. So not a big mystery.
And I sent those pictures to Paul Bunker and asked him to go out and look at it, and said, where are those in relationship to Grant's place, because the project didn't go over that far.
That's correct.
Right, so I didn't know why there were flags over there. And his response is, I'm assuming whoever went out to delineate the wetlands just went further back from the project limits. Clearing has been done, seems to be the extent of what is shown on the plans we have.
Okay, and we, we have nothing to do with the flags that he's referencing.
So we didn't.
We don't own that property.
Yep.
Right, we didn't know who did what. But then several people commented on the amount of clearing, and I said, anything over Naker requires stormwater management, which I had mentioned to you before. And that's when the first email, and we discussed it here, and then I sent you the email after the meeting. And all of those emails I CC'd to the building inspector or the building commissioner, because he's the enforcement agent. So it's preferable that he's in on the beginning of all of this. Nobody on this board, to my knowledge, ever went down and asked him to go out and do anything. And I certainly never went down and stomped my feet in his office.
That's exactly what he told me that day, that why I went in there. And he was all beside himself, too. So there was some conflict between him, and maybe not just the planning board, but something else. He was very.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. He had come up here the night of the meeting and asked a question. I explained it, and then he got angry with me about scanning and emailing decision letters to him. And he went storming downstairs, and that's the last time I ever spoke to him. So my last conversation with him had nothing to do with you whatsoever. So my last conversation with him had nothing to do with you whatsoever. It was literally, he was in an email chain.
Okay.
So, I apologize for his behavior on behalf of the town, because that was never the intent of anybody on this board, and not my intent to have anybody go out and throw a cease and desist on a project that didn't require it, right? That's why I invited you to a meeting tonight.
For my part, as one board member, that's what I, this, it first hit my radar, when, when I had heard that there was a cease and desist, and then kind of went up to the office, and.
Me, too.
Went in with Liz to say, what's happening here?
Okay.
And up to that point, I, I had no knowledge of any of this. And so, that's when I began to get some of the backstory on, on what had happened up to that point.
And then I had a conversation with Jason, who said, to his knowledge, things had been resolved, and the stop work order had been removed.
And that, that was my question.
Jason Harris, our interim.
My question to Liz was. Okay, I didn't, I don't know him.
You haven't met him?
No.
He's, he's a nice guy.
Okay.
So, that was, that was like, in two days, or a day later, or whatever.
Yeah. When we spoke in the office that day, the, the question was, well, is that cease and desist order still in place? And at that point, I don't think we were sure.
We didn't know.
And, he said, well, it shouldn't be, because based upon what you had told me, it, it.
Well, what triggered the whole thing was the clear cut.
I guess.
That triggered.
That was the whole thing.
I guess.
That triggered the email, the conversation this board had, and then the email that went to him, and the fact that I CC'd the last building commissioner on those emails, and he took it upon himself to go out there and slap a stop work order on it.
It's kind of bizarre that he did that, but I can understand where he's, because you did, because it's, I don't know if you did it, but because it was completely clear cut, that you can't even control, mitigate the water that's coming out of that property.
Um, we, we have mitigated the water, and we have our erosion control that's approved by Conservation in place, and.
So does he need, I'm sorry to interrupt you, so is the next step for him, does he need to have his engineer sort of review the thing, and, and answer back, and say, this is why we're not doing this?
So, all you need to do is, well, and I mean, I'm not mitigating that at all, is take the current stormwater that was approved, and have your engineer make sure that it meets our current stormwater bylaw.
That's, that's one thing I was looking for clarification.
Right, and if he certifies that, with his stamp as an engineer, then I think that's good enough for you guys, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Except they changed the storm rating, from what you're talking about, to what was approved.
That's probably true.
So it's not that easy.
No, no, I know, but it's.
And it's not that expensive.
But I, they're not, I mean, we're not gonna ask you to then have it reviewed by our engineer, right?
Okay.
As long as his engineer stamps it, that it's efficient, is that?
Yeah, it's fine. Actually, you, you're just part of this whole system, of people who have done stuff without asking anything.
Without it getting built.
Without, or without getting built, or whatever it is. So we want to make sure, whatever the case is, that somebody is still officially involved with this, and the person isn't just doing whatever they want.
And it's not just you, it's, it's the federal government that's making the towns, they're holding the towns responsible for it. So it's not just you, it's anybody who's had a plan permitted before 2020, I think that's when we adopted it, and, like Rose Place, they would have to go back, and that was permitted 15, 16 years ago. They're gonna have to go back, too, to make sure their stormwater is compliant.
So, I hope you can see, you know, that we're just trying to do our jobs.
And nobody, nobody, nobody ever, ever asked him to go out and put a stop work order on that.
Okay, well, I can't dispute that, I'm just telling you exactly what he said to me, and.
Yep.
I think I will, I, I just, to what you were saying, Jeff, we, I was in here before, and I talked to the entire board, to say that I was the one building the road, so if there was a problem, I could be contacted on my cellphone, or through email, to address it. But as of right now, we had been following the approved plan. So, we weren't doing anything wrong. And we are allowed to clear cut that, that's within the approval, that's why you have the limit of work. There's three tree plantings per lot upon completion that we're required to put back, but keeping trees is really hard, too, during the construction process, between having a clearance around the house, so trees don't fall on it, and then doing underground utilities. So, that's why it looks so clear cut right now, but once we place the four homes in there, it'll look a lot smaller. So, okay.
I think your partner wanted to say something.
I'm sorry.
I have a quick question, could you read the decision again from the town council?
Um, I said to her, I asked about the covenant, and I asked about the stormwater. And she said, the covenant indicates the binding is, the covenant that it is binding on all successes, and therefore, the covenant is binding on Robert English LLC. So, the covenant that went from Rourke to mento is still binding on the land, not necessarily the landowner. So she was okay with the covenant issue. With regard to the stormwater, stormwater bylaw is a general bylaw pursuant to Section 8, quote exemption subsection 10, any construction activity or project requiring approval under subdivision rules and regulations, where the planning board has approved a definitive subdivision application, and any construction activity requiring site plan review and/or special permit, provided that the plans include stormwater management provisions, and that the activity is in compliance with the additional performance standards contained in the regulations promulgated to implement this bylaw. So that's the part where you guys have to comply with the stormwater.
So regardless, I mean, because it, I could, I could almost, my name's Andrew Speth, by the way.
Can you come up here and use the microphone? I'm sorry, just, you want to be a star at home with the residents of Abington?
No, I don't really want to be a star anywhere. Uh, my name is Andrew Speth, I'm Jason's partner on the project. My, my question, or really my concern is, we're mid-construction, right? We've begun. We were in front of the board.
I know, but I did tell Jason, I know you guys keep coming back to that, that the board didn't tell you, the board didn't tell you, but before you bought the property, I did tell you, you should look at the.
How many times was I in the office?
Well, you were in the office multiple times about different things.
What time did you say that?
I think it was the first or second time you came in about this particular project. And I did say, you need to take a look at our stormwater, because you would have to comply with it. So, I, you know, the fact that the board didn't tell you is.
Is true.
Is true.
Okay.
But I did tell you, in the office.
In one spot, I probably.
And you said, I don't have to, my lawyer or somebody told me, and I remember that part, that your lawyer said, you didn't have to comply, because it was a small project, four lots, I think you said.
Or less, or less.
Right.
Was referring.
That was our conversation.
The original stormwater design, not the new stormwater bylaw.
And I said, the stormwater bylaw. I mean, so you were aware of it, if for nothing else.
But, but for us, it's, like, it's new to us, we're not even sure how to do it.
And normally, it's done in tandem at this point, if some new person comes in, they do it in tandem. But for projects that haven't been built.
So I just, I understand that we would need to provide a stormwater plan, a mitigating plan, for each lot.
You have to ensure you're.
For each lot, but my, my bigger question is, we, we've now begun a project, we're mid-construction, let's, let me play devil's advocate, and say, the engineer looks at it, and says, well, this won't comply with the 2020 regulation, this now becomes a non-viable project, that we've paid $80,000 to the water department, I forget how much to sewer. We're, we're down the road, how do you put the toothpaste back in the tube, essentially, at this point? I, I understand that, you know, maybe we could, i- is there a way that we could maybe look a little bit more carefully at each site plan for each house? Because we still have to come in front, we still have to apply for building permits, could we look a little bit more carefully at stormwater mitigating efforts per lot, so that we can continue with the bigger, the bigger project?
You know what's funny is that, biggest problem we have is, well, what was I trying to say about? Is, when, when the developer comes in, we do this beautiful water management plan before the houses are done, then each house gets sold, and the builder doesn't want to do squat with that. So these people get stuck with the backyard, that should've been filled up, and it's not, the water's coming all the way up to their back door. So we have more problem on that end, controlling the individual houses. The residents end up getting screwed, coming back in here yelling at us, and we're like, oh, you have to go sue your builder. But, I don't know if that's an official thing, but I, I don't have a issue with it.
I mean, the problem is, the planning board looks at the road construction and the drainage.
That's correct, yeah.
They're not necessarily looking at the house sites themselves, and the drainage.
Well, I think we're.
On the house sites, right? Where, they're looking at the detention basins, the impervious surface.
I understand, I think we're in a, a unique situation, which is, I believe, twofold. To your point, we are, we're doing the road installation, as well as the site work on each lot, so we're taking ownership of both. The, the second unique situation is, again, we're kind of mid-construction here, this is, I, I, what do we do? Do we, do I not send the crews there tomorrow to continue with the water and sewer work?
Well, how far is your engineer in under the review?
Well, we, we aren't using the same engineer that, that did the, did the plans for the subdivision, so that's one of the, the biggest problems that we have at this, this point. We don't have all those calculations.
No, I probably have them.
Okay, well, that would certainly be helpful, I mean.
Be happy to share them with you.
You know, best case scenario, we have a consulting engineer look at it, and says, yeah, this is fine. I'm just saying, what hap, where, where do we get to if it's not fine? What do we do? How do we handle this? How do we do the, how do we move forward, so that we can continue to go to work tomorrow, basically?
How much difference did we find in the stormwater management? I mean, what was the additional, do you remember what kind of, what stuck out at us?
It's, it was our, the stormwater management that they, that Dave used to use, is what the, what the state promulgated, and then, the ones we adopted are ones part of that MS4 permit.
Which just means higher quantities of water, yeah.
Lot more restrictive.
Oh, I see, I see. I think for my part, your particular circumstance, I understand the frustration, and the, the already considerable work underway. I, I think, in answer to your question, we'd have to get the engineer's opinion as to how far out of compliance it may be.
Yeah.
If it's that much out of compliance, then perhaps it's, you know, we can, we can.
Sure, I mean, I guess, I'm, we're both just looking for a little bit of, we're looking to work together, I guess, if we find that there's a worst-case scenario. This, you know, what if we find out that, that this was only now a three-lot subdivision, or, I mean, there, there could be some, some major ramifications, that we never would've been in this position, had we known that that was.
Well, let's find out, find out what it is, we don't, I mean, we're kind, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, I, I think, I think it would be smart, maybe, maybe I could come by tomorrow, and, and see what you have for, for the, the engineering documents, and, and we can have it reviewed, and maybe best-case scenario, we're back, and everything's fine.
Yeah. Well, with the stop order thing, I don't know about that, I don't know when that is a viable thing to hand to somebody, but I, I know for one thing, that we would work with you, we can't work with you, but the, whoever we have for building, inspector can.
And, and at the end of the day, I hate to, hate to say this, but the, the federal government is making the town responsible for the stormwater, right? So our DPW has a whole slew of detention basins, and are responsible to, on a list to clean all the time.
No, and I completely understand that, you, Abington isn't the first town.
We're all between a rock and a hard place at the end of the day.
We do quite a bit of the stormwater stuff.
Yep.
On individual, individual lots, full subdivisions, we deal with it in every town.
So why don't we start with having the engineer look at it, and, and, apples to apples, and see if and how far off you might be, and if.
That's fair, I think.
And if there are solutions that maybe we can, the board can come to.
Yeah, I think if we can commit to work together, to try to get through this.
Some part of these stormwater calculations would've been part of the original.
Oh, yeah.
Plan, right?
Right, right.
That was reviewed and approved.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, we don't, we don't have that engineer, we, we don't have those calculations, we didn't use that engineer.
No, but I do.
But if you have them, and we can get a hold of them.
I have a whole file draw of fun stuff like that.
Perfect, so maybe, maybe we can, you know, I could come by, and, and we could just dig through them, and, and we'll get them over to our person.
Give me a quick call before you come in, because I've got a couple of things.
Yeah, no problem.
No idea what they're in there.
No, that's fine, absolutely.
So, make sure I'm sitting there, but I'll get them out first thing in the morning.
We do have roof drains required per house.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying about this being a requirement, but it's, it wasn't required to be enforced on this project at this particular time.
It wasn't in 2018, but it.
It's been chosen to be required, applied, so it's not a rock and a hard place, you guys have chosen to apply it to our project.
We, no, actually, town council told us that the town is required to do it, because the federal government required the town to adopt the bylaw.
We always turn to them, because these things are just beyond us figuring.
Right, I.
I agree, and, and I think, you know, town council may have one opinion, our attorney may have another, we don't need to go down that road if we can commit to.
Hence the reason for the MS4.
Getting this.
You know what I mean? We didn't dream up MS4, and believe me, John Stone would be the happiest person on earth if we said, goodbye, all the MS4 stuff is goodbye.
It is, I agree with you, it is kind of unfair that it's something that was already approved, but our, our hands are tied, and it's as new to you as it is to us, it's something we just adopted, and it's been jammed down our throats.
Right.
By the, by the government.
And thus, jammed down ours, too.
Yes.
But we're, you know, keep in mind, at the end of the day, we're right in the checks.
I don't know what the legalities are, but you would think there would be some sort of, somewhere without even.
Sure, so.
Yeah, you know.
Give it play.
Right, but apparently, there's, there's not, and I'm not a lawyer, that's why we use town council.
Just two waivers might apply to us, possibly, but we work with the board before we even talk to the engineer to determine what was approved, and what would be required.
Unless, unless you could come up with something different, it sounds like, it sounds like from town council that you, you need to comply, unfortunately. And I do agree, it's unfair.
To be good customer service folks, moving forward, are there any other projects that kind of fall in this hole of approved before we pass the bylaw?
Oh, there's a bunch of them.
But having started, that.
Rose Place is one.
Right, so is there a way that we have a list, that maybe we can send them a letter saying, hey, just so you know, you have to now abide by new stormwater bylaw, regardless of when your project was approved?
Yep. Yep.
I don't want to...I hate giving you more work, but I don't know how easy it would be to figure out what that list of outstanding projects are.
Yep. All right, and then...
And not to belabor this, Jason, but you understand the sequence. So there was the approval, and then a couple of years later, the stormwater regulations were approved. We weren't sure what the correct answer was about whether they would apply to prior approvals. Town council has come back to us and said, "Yes, in fact, they do."
I understand. It's just, for all the reasons that we mentioned, it's not very fair to do that, but I appreciate you-
We're with you.
Tony Riley would like to make a call in here, please.
Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. I have tried to read through the stormwater management control bylaw, and just so we know what the problem is, as Liz or someone mentioned, there are exceptions to certain developments that do not have to get a stormwater management permit, and those are developments that have received a site plan approval or a subdivision plan approval from the board, as long as you have that extra language that says, and it conforms to stormwater management standards. Or if they receive an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission that says that it conforms to all stormwater management, blah, blah, blah. So the stormwater management bylaw is intended to kind of cover all those other projects that fall through those gaps, like someone who wants to clear more than an acre of their backyard or their back land, whatever, and doesn't need site plan review and doesn't have wetlands, but you still have to now trigger this stormwater management to make sure that you're controlling your stormwater. Fine. These guys in this quandary, because they went through, or the previous owner went through subdivision approval, had it engineered according to stormwater management, got it reviewed by the town's engineer, everything was done by the book, and they bought it, then this bylaw came into effect. And for some god-benounced reason, it doesn't specifically say that this doesn't apply to previously-approved projects, which would clear this whole thing up. And I guess I'd like to ask if there's a possibility we could write to town council to say, "Is there any reason why we can't amend the bylaw to put that language in there?"
You can ask for a waiver on it.
Well, that's the other thing I was saying. They can reply for waivers. They don't even come back to this board for that permit. It's a whole separate committee.
No, it's them.
No, they've...
You guys are now the stormwater management committee?
No.
Yes, stormwater permitting authority.
There's a committee, but they said any review is done through us.
But we get the permit from the committee?
No, you get the permit from them.
You're sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. I mean, because as you read it right now-
That committee met and-
Delegated.
Delegated their authority to the planning board.
This is crazy.
That's where a lot of stuff happens to us.
Because if you read what they're sup...you know, if you go by the-
There should have been some language in there for just this situation.
Exactly. And because theoretically, they're supposed to...as Andy was kind of...nice to meet you, Andy. I haven't met Andy. It says they're supposed to file an application with a $2,500 engineering review fee and a $100 application fee, blah, 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 and basically a full set of engineered plans and erosion control plans and stormwater management design calculations on land that they've already disturbed. And like I said, it's impossible. We're already halfway through the project. They can't physically do that. So you'd be basically...that's why I'm saying, maybe there's a way we can, moving forward, amend that bylaw, hopefully at the upcoming town meeting, to say, "Moving forward, any other permit that's going forward, this is how we're going to treat it." But to tell projects that were previously approved that you have to hold everything and then re-engineer everything is going to create...never mind the delay. That's...that would probably cost them, and I'm just guessing, between $10,000 and $15,000 to go through that permitting process with all that engineering. And that's huge.
But they're not asking them to go through the permitting process.
You're asking an engineer to certify that everything is fine.
That it's compliant with our stormwater regs.
Yes. Which isn't exactly what the bylaw requires. It requires a lot more. You're working with them to cut...to shortcut, which is great.
Right, because it's...
The situation.
As long as it's compliant.
Yes. It's still going to cost them money for an engineer to go back and look at another engineer's drawings from, I don't know when it was, 10 or 15 years ago, and compare it to current stormwater. And I don't know that stormwater has changed all that much at all. Hopefully, it's going to be a relatively safe, straightforward review. But I just want people at home to know, that's the rub, is that these guys just get stuck in process, a bylaw change, and it apparently is, as it's written, is applying retroactively. And that is the worst thing in the world that can possibly happen to any developer, any homeowner for that matter. So I know they...you understand their frustration. I know you understand that, you know, it's new to you. It's new to me. I still can't figure out some of the provisions. But I just want to say that I'm sure they'll do what they can. It doesn't allow for waivers, you know, where they don't have to apply every single thing that's in the bylaw or submit everything that's in the bylaw. And I hope, especially if this board is the permitting authority, that you will work with them with the waivers. But maybe we can ask town council, is there a way we can-
I will send her an email tomorrow.
Because otherwise, you guys will be revisiting this.
With the blessings of the chief.
Good luck.
I will send it to her tomorrow.
I would think, you know, we would be able to vote either way, good or bad, whatever the circumstances, whether we want to include that or not include that.
The problem is the federal government is holding the town responsible.
Yeah.
Right, I know. So everybody knows that now.
And the fines are pretty steep, if I remember right, too. Wasn't it like $25,000 a day or something?
Yeah.
Can you repeat that, Rick?
There's some provision where if the town falls out of compliance with these regulations, that the fines were like $25,000 a day. It was something obscene. So-
That the town would be fined-
Yeah.
-if we're not compliant with the overall permit, which is everything assigned to the DPW.
Yeah, I was trying to look at what it covered, because that seems pretty extreme, you know, it's a lot of money, which makes it not-
Right.
Well, it's meant...yeah, it's meant to hurt. Yeah.
It's meant to keep us in compliance.
Okay, well, thank you, board.
All right, now, see one or both of you tomorrow-
Yep.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Early, we'll get a copy of that stormwater for you, and then you can get it rolling. And I'll email town council and see what our take is on retroactively applying, if there's something we can amend in April.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is 610 Site Plan Review, 907 Bedford Street addition. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing New Inlet LLC, whose principal owner and manager is Jim Stone, who's here in the back row. Many of you may already know Mr. Stone. He's been a longtime owner of the Abington-Sonoco at the corner of 18 and 139, which is...the property address is 907 Bedford Street. And that's what we're here for today. We've submitted a request for a site plan approval. It does not require a hearing because it's a minor project. Essentially, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's an open and operating gas station, service station that faces and fronts on Route 18 on Bedford Street. It currently has the store and office on the left side of the building with the three bays to the right. The property is paved pretty much throughout with the exception of behind the building. And what we're proposing to do is to add a fourth bay on the right side of the building where there's currently pavement, for the purpose of basically making it a little bit more aesthetic, clean it up a bit, and also make it more efficient. I've submitted a copy of the design that almost is identical to what we're contemplating. It was the picture of the one in Hanson. It's kind of the reversed flip side. They added the bay on the left side. We'd be adding the bay on the right side. And it's very similar in that that extra bay, the fourth bay, would be a higher bay so that they could have, you know, a truck in there or, you know, a vehicle up on the lifts. Currently, Mr. Stone has two lifts outside in this same area where we'd build a...essentially build a bay around it. So as he was saying during the wintertime, someone's got the short draw who has to go work outside, and there's some days like this past weekend where you just can't do work outside. So Mr. Stone is asking for permission from the town to add this bay. We need to do that, we need to proceed here with site plan approval, and then we'll be going to the zoning board this coming Thursday night for variances for the setbacks, which we hope that the zoning board will also approve. We have asked that the board waive any requirement that there be some sort of engineering of this site plan or any engineering from the town, because, as I mentioned, we're not changing the impervious surfaces here. What is pavement will now be a roof. So we're not changing the drainage. We're not changing the topography. We're not taking away any parking. The parking still is the same, with the exception that we'll have now parking inside this new bay. So it's a relatively, I don't want to say no change to the site plan, but essentially no net change to drainage, traffic, safety. If anything, it just enhances and improves a longtime Abington business, makes it look a little bit sharper in that we can take those storage containers that have been outside for many years, and all of that stuff now goes inside. Because that second level will also have a mezzanine around the left and right and rear sides, so there'll be storage above, but still have a clear shot up to the ceiling so that the lifts can still operate. As Mr. Stone said back when he started in 1998? Yeah, well, he owned it, let's say, in 98, worked there longer. There was only one or two types of oil, and now there's 20 plus? Yeah, 10 or 20. So that's why there's a lot more storage needs in your modern-day service station. So the plans have been submitted to the board. We submitted not only the sketch of the site plan, but also the elevation plan showing the proposed location both before and after, or existing and proposed. I think it's kind of a straightforward permit and a straightforward design, so I don't want to spend a lot of time, because I know you've already been spending a lot of time on other things. But Jim and I are both here willing to answer any questions if there's anything from the board or any abutters, although I don't see any abutters here tonight. So we're asking you for a site plan approval.
Any exterior lighting being proposed, side or back?
Other than just having typical signage in the front, I don't know you're having any...no.
At nighttime, I know you shut all the lights off.
Yeah, 9 o'clock. Roof drainage, where does that run to?
The roof drainage, I don't know the answer to that right now. Typically, we see in one construction that it's brought back into the ground, the downspouts. If you want to condition that, that can be fine.
Well, just right now, you're going from it's...it's not...it's-
Pavement, it's imperv...yeah, it's pavement right in that area, to the right of the building, to the fence.
Yeah.
So whatever, anything that rains, some of it's coming towards Route 18.
Yeah.
Now, we'd have gutters on the roof, so we'd be able to control it.
Right, but there's no onsite drainage for stormwater?
Correct.
This is built before that.
Correct.
So it runs off into the intersection?
Correct.
And that's what happened, again, with the addition, is it drain off into the intersection?
It...there is a...there's a...there is a strip drained out at your driveway, I believe, right? Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Whatever...we're not changing any of the existing drainage, so nothing is going to be exacerbated or worsened, let's say that. Anything that goes out to the rear, there is a gravel grass area out back, so that's not pavement. It is pervious, I should say. So-
So is it going to be...excuse me, is it going to be paved right up to the lot line?
The pavement's already there.
13 feet? Yeah, it's going to be all dug up when you do the addition.
Yeah, we...there still will be existing paving outside this addition. The addition doesn't go as far as the existing paving does, but what we're doing is trying to get-
So when you excavate for this new addition-
Yep.
-you're probably going to lose that 13 feet of pavement in the meantime, a good percentage of it. So are we going to repave all around this building, I guess, right up to the lot line?
What's that?
I guess that was my question.
One of our contractors saying, "Well, the pavement...limit of pavement will not be increased."
Liz, do our buffer bylaws apply here? Do they need to request a waiver for the buffer bylaws? Because it's the residential use next door.
Yeah, multifamily next door. We have...there is an existing fence there.
And I believe what we learned, unfortunately, on Adams Street, is that the buffer applies to the use, not the zone. So it's not if you're going from residential to, you know, commercial to residential. It's a commercial use to residential use. There needs to be a buffer. And unfortunately, you're adjusting the building here. I'm not going to say no, because you don't have a 25-foot green strip, but do you need at least a waiver?
The buffer...the buffer is required for a commercial property or multifamily property that abuts a residence or residential district. We're in a commercial district-
It's a residential use.
A residential use, yes, or residential district.
Correct.
To our right is the residential use.
Yeah.
Right, if you're looking at-
Where the garage, yeah, where you're-
Yeah. There's an existing six-foot stockade fence was required. If you think you want suitable plantings, which is the phrase used in the bylaw, it could be added along the fence.
I want you to ask for a waiver or whatever it would...
Then, you're right. We can ask for the...we'd ask for a waiver of amending the existing buffer, because we're trying not to change anything, really, other than putting a roof over what exists there now.
Right. I don't think you're making this worse. I don't think you're making it...but I also don't think you're adjusting the existing footprint, making it closer to the lot line, so...
Our thought was, and our goal was, for the benefit of especially our neighbor immediately to the right, is it does two things. It takes away some of the outside storage and the outside activity, meaning the two lifts. So it's obviously going to be a quieter situation now. So we're hoping that this is a benefit, not only to this business, but to our-
From my point as the planning board member, is that this is a question we have to ask anyone now.
Yeah.
So...because even though this situation makes it...probably makes it better, there are other situations where it might not, and we have to at least-
Right.
-be fair and say, "No, we're asking this to everybody who is encroaching into this 25-foot buffer. What are you going to do about it?" So are there trees on the other person's property?
Not to my knowledge.
Does the neighbor next door have any trees on near...
They're rid of all.
Oh, did he?
He cut them down. And I don't...trying to think with...I don't know where you're getting the 25-foot.
He doesn't care.
I think it's 10. Two structures here, because he doesn't look there.
Eight, nine, and then-
They have like a...what is it, a garage out back next door to your right, the multifamily?
There's a multifamily house, and then there's another house.
Out back that they-
Something like that, yeah.
That's another house.
Yeah, there's like a long driveway getting out there.
Yeah.
I don't have the aerial with me. It's a...that's a single story, I think, one out back.
Like a mungol?
Kind of like. I think it might have been like a converted garage from years back. I don't know much about the property. That's just my recollection of looking over the fence.
Is there any-
Couple of those in there.
Is there any activity that's going to take place in that space between the addition and the fence?
No, all the storage, everything will be going in. If, you know, at most, I don't even know if there's a width of a car that would be left over there, but, you know, if they-
My concern more is, all right, that's the place where now you go to bang out something, a rim or something, and now it's just loud. So...
No, if anything, I mean, I can't imagine why I would need to, because now he has the four bays that are all interconnected. There's no walls between the bays, so it's, you know, an open area. You know, is there a temporary storage of a box? Because if something got delivered, sure. But we're trying to get rid of any long-term storage out there.
I just want to read, excuse me, just for a second. I just want to read the comments we got from Public Works and from Marion Wong. "Mr. Hughes, the Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearings scheduled for February 6th as the following comments. 907 Bedford Street, this proposal located on Assessment Plan 53, Lot 285, 26284 appears to have no bearing on the sewer system." Then Ms. Wong, the zoning enforcement officer, said that this is to inform you that Jason and I both have no comments as it pertains to the site plan review packet. We are aware that the applicant owner is before the ZVA on 29 and file accordingly. Thank you.
I know the elevation isn't a final architectural plan. Is there any reason it wouldn't look like that, generally speaking?
No, he's asking. He wants...Rick wants to make sure that the architectural rendition that we submitted will be exactly the same. We're not going to change the roof line.
No.
This is not a bait and switch.
It won't become a cinder block square or, you know-
Well, my building is cinder block.
Well, I mean, it's going to match. More like the one that's across from the Yale House or something, or it's not going to be like-
How it looks in the front is how I want it to look in the front, and how it is around the sides is how it'll look around the sides.
Shingled roof, you know, continuing on with that.
That's fine.
It's going to look just like the one up here, then, to the one across from Hanson Town Hall. That's an oval section.
One right on 58.
Need to ask a question, so some people feel like they don't have to actually build what they show us.
Yeah, I know that.
So one question I think that we couldn't ask, sort of, is drainage of the pitch roof, so we know in general what it was.
Do you know-
Asphalt now.
Right.
What the topography of that was, you had a general sense of where the rainwater went.
Right.
This will change that.
Right, anything that...so as you're looking at the new bay-
Yeah.
You're going to have some water flow to the left off the roof, some to the right. That which goes to the left is going to intersect with the existing roof and follow those gutters. The half of it that goes to the right will hit those gutters, so I guess then it becomes a question of where do we put the downspouts.
Motorcycle, yeah.
We go out...so the rear is probably the best, because that's where the impervious area...sorry, the pervious area is, where water can dissipate out in the far back. But if anything, because only half the roof, even if half...even if it didn't have a gutter, if half the roof came down and hit the pavement, it's half the water that was, because the other half is going into the gutter system. You know, follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And it will flow wherever the natural flow is right now.
But the intent is to have a gutter on that side?
Yeah, on the right side. Well, I think...I think you're-
I wouldn't have the gutter on that side, depending towards the back, where it's going to land on the grass.
It only-
That'll be half of it, yeah.
Yeah, and it would only benefit Mr. Stone also, because if he lets the water come down out the front, anything that's sheeting in the front can ice up.
Sure.
So all the better.
Any further discussion? Anyone like...anyone, any comments at all?
I think it's a better deal, everything being inside than being outside.
Much cleaner look.
And this big hurdle is coming up.
Excuse me?
Your big hurdle is coming up.
What's that?
The zoning board. Which-
Yeah, but I think-
I'm just-
We're relatively confident with the zoning board, just because of the existing structure and the limitations that I think...I submitted a project description, which kind of gives you a vision of what we're going to say. That's already been submitted to them, so we'll be there on Thursday night.
Will it help your case to have any sort of language from us about the use between the building and the property line?
I think it would be helpful if, obviously, the board approves the site plan, sees no need for any additional buffer, and, you know, is proud to support a local, longtime business in Abington.
And not work in that area, so-
Yeah. There are, as I mentioned-
Right, exactly.
Obviously, Mr. Stone's doing this for his business's selfish reasons, to make it better and easier on his employees, but there are- it better and easier on his employees, but there are, as we stated, some benefits to our direct competitors.
Now, this being worked on outside, now it's gonna be inside.
Right.
And the storage containers go away, so there's gonna be less stuff outside.
Right.
And as you indicate here, there's no tanks, underground tanks.
Not on the right side. On the left, so that's why we can't add on the left side of the building.
Yep, yep.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion. Someone wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
You requesting a waiver for the, for the-
I was gonna have you vote that second, a second.
Okay, that's fine.
So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Liz, there was a second thing we need to-
Motion to grant the waiver of the buffer.
Vegetated buffer.
Vegetated buffer.
Any increase or revision to the existing buffer?
There you go, these are lawyers. I'll make that motion.
Someone wanna second this?
Second law.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
So I will send all of that to the zoning board tomorrow.
Much appreciated. We have a busy day tomorrow.
I have no idea. I'll CC you on that if I remember. If not, you can ping me in the afternoon, tell you, can I get a copy of that? All right. Can we have a two-minute break?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call a meeting back to order.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just walk through Rose Place.
Mm-hmm.
Neither of, the people showed up again tonight, not Azul and Mr. Morris. I asked, last time when they were here, I asked if they would send me the information from DEP, that said that they were supposed to try to work with the planning board, and I never received an email. I did reach out to DEP, and that particular project is, MIPA, he has no information, that MIPA told them to come back to the planning board to try to work that out. And that they really haven't made any movement on that plan with DEP or MIPA for years, until recently. They got a public hearing notice, that they were gonna start to move forward, but at the end of the day, there's no additional information, so I don't know what you want me to tell Mr. Morris or Mr. Itineiro. Besides that they would have to comply with our new stormwater button.
Well, that'll get the conversation going.
Right, that'll start.
That should-
I, I assume that was just an informal thing.
It was, but we continued it, and so I, if there's no response required, I'm happy to do no response required.
No, if you want us to take a vote on it.
I like that, though.
If we continue it any further, I wasn't real happy about the proposal to begin with, the lack of information. If they wanna file something formally, that's entirely up to them.
We did kinda hope it went away.
I think, I don't know if they were just fishing, or, but, that's up to them. If they wanna file something, they could buzz in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Discussion, vacant lots, Kluwitz Way, Board of Selectmen meeting.
All right, so you have all been invited. I believe I included the invitation from town, town manager, and it's-
Privately owned.
Four lots down there that we bought. Now, remember, years and years ago, you permitted condos or apartments down there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so eventually the town purchased that for, I think, five hundred thousand dollars when you were at town meeting.
When they were building the school.
Yeah, yeah, when we were building the school.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's lots two, A, B, and C, which are behind the structure on the corner of Bedford Street and Lincoln Boulevard, and then those other lots are town owns.
What are the lots?
Two A, two B, and two C.
Yeah, A, B, C, yeah.
Yep. So I think a lot of different groups have ideas of what they would like to see there. There's some recreation uses, I think, that some people wanna see there. I think there's Affordable Housing Trust has some ideas of what they'd like to see there. So I think that's why the town manager's asked everybody to come to the meeting and give input. So I threw it on the agenda, so you guys can discuss what your thoughts are on it, and take any votes you wanna take tonight, so you don't have to worry about open meeting hard fractions at this-
I doubt this is related at all, but what's hap, on the other side of the tombstone place, there's a temporary fence all the way around the property and a bunch of trucks?
They're storing the-
Esplenda trucks, yeah.
Electrical contractor.
It's my understanding that our previous building commissioner, the same one who ordered the cease and desist, allowed that to be a temporary storage facility.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I got.
Where do we find these people?
I don't have any specific thoughts, because there's no specific plan. I mean, I think there needs to be a major look at all of our recreational fields, because with, if the fire, new fire station does take away two basketball courts, those courts are also not used for a very popular street hockey program in the summer. So I just think there needs to be some larger look at how everything is kind of arranged in town, since so many, the demographics have changed over the past twenty-five years. So, you know, Little League isn't as big as it once was. You have street hockey, which we didn't have a few years ago. Soccer is all contained on, behind the fields now, for the most part. So softball is bigger than it was. So it's like, how can we, do we need to take a larger look at how everything is kind of arranged? I don't know. I don't know if that means that place be the best place for street hockey courts or something. I just don't know. I don't know if it'd be best for affordable housing. I don't know.
I think both ideas have been floated.
Yeah.
Hence why we're gonna have the meeting, right?
Yeah. They're not bad ideas, so.
I just don't think you could do both there.
Wasn't that originally eyed for some sort of memorial space, or garden, or park, or something? Wasn't that being looked at, and then was that dropped?
I think that was discarded as probably not an appropriate use.
Okay.
I think something like that they could include on a site somewhere else, and not make it its own site, right?
I can tell you, as someone who's on the Community Preservation Act Committee, those uses of those lots have been hotly discussed at the CPA committee.
That's what I mean.
And I would imagine the same's gonna happen.
What was that conversation like?
The board's logic-
Just differences of opinion about how to use them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know, the best way of solving it is first come, first served, whoever puts together a plan first gets it, versus-
I would assume there's gotta be a little more-
Maximum usage.
A little more thought gone into than just first come, first served. I would like to think there's a lot more thought going into it than that.
Well, I did post it, so you can all go.
Or this meeting, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would be a good meeting to attend.
So you are posted, if you wanna go. All five of you can show up without-
Without being thrown out?
Without getting reported. I also just wanna pop in here. I got this folder of information on Birch Street from Shirley Carino. If anybody wants to come in and look at it, they're free to do so. Not quite sure what's in here, but you, wanted to make sure that you guys had access to this information.
Regarding the property behind?
I don't think we gotta worry about it till they come from the planning board.
All right, not right at this minute, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Was there anyone in the audience who wanted to talk about the Kluwitz Way property?
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to talk about Kluwitz Way?
I don't think there's a team.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a sealed envelope with information about Birch Street, but we don't know what's in the envelope.
It's information, a lot of accumulated information, deeds and plans and stuff that's been proposed or disposed of over the years. If you'd like to take it home, I would happily let you do that.
I, I, I made no such overture.
You do not wanna do that? And you could report back next week?
Just you were waving a sealed envelope and asking us what we wanted to talk about it.
I'm taking bids later.
Wasn't sure what to do with that.
Sounds like an old Johnny Carson sketch.
Right, right.
I've got a sealed envelope in my hand.
Karnak the Magnificent. I don't know, I just wanted to let you know that.
You have a sealed envelope.
She did drop it off, and it's for you guys to see, and you're free to come in anytime and look at it.
Let's get into the discussion of the proposed zoning changes.
Okay, while we're there, battery energy storage, do you guys wanna move forward with that at this annual town meeting, or do you wanna kick it down the road to the fall, for a fall town meeting?
I don't really, I mean, I think we found out pretty much what we, well, other than how to look at one of their plans, that's the only difference we don't know. Obviously, it's a pretty broad topic. It's still evolving, from a regulatory perspective.
From a lot of stuff.
Yeah, fire codes. For my part, I don't think I know nearly enough to be able to get to a point where I'd be comfortable putting in anything in front of town meeting on that.
In April.
Don't know, we don't know.
Yeah, I feel like there's a whole other side that we still don't know about yet. And I don't know if it's worth, not in time for this town meeting, but soon-
All right.
-have someone from the state or some other group to explain that this is the drawbacks or cautions, or whatever.
All right.
Some of the other municipalities that had been tackling this issue had formed cross committee groups to talk about it, and I don't know whether that's an appropriate approach, but a lot of people have input and opinions that we need to consider for, before we did anything in this. We asked for sample bylaws at other towns that passed. Are those the right bylaws for us?
He said the town of Mendon had a pretty good bylaw.
Yep.
Is that Mendon, Rhode Island, though? Or Mendon, Mass, you think?
I thought he meant Mass, but he didn't say. The other, the other thing is, I guess I could call him and ask where our substations are, and how many we got. I think our bigger problem is gonna be if someone wants to do a solar, or someone wants to do a big rooftop.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to address it somehow, because it's almost, I don't know, the legalities of someone with a big rooftop array.
That they would require the battery storage.
Right, the battery, battery storage, and can they do it that we don't have any bylaws?
Does the high school have panels on top? They do?
Oh, on top, they do. But not enough to require a battery, right? No, because I know that we're gonna build that carport and do solar on top of that.
Right, there's a spec, there must be a lot of spec in the plan, to tell you how many, how many five hundred.
Never came to us to put it on top, did they?
Well, that's-
Never came to us to put it on top, they just did it.
Yeah.
That, that wasn't, that was passed last year at the end of the year, right? The requirement for the battery, for the solar.
Yeah.
Certainly.
It keeps evolving. It keeps evolving, the whole thing.
So I guess, is it something that we should be, we need a bylaw for, or they, if someone had a big enough one to, to put on a rooftop is my problem. Is that gonna require us, is that gonna require-
Or a field.
...site plan review? Is it, you know, a field would require site plan review, but what's the deal with the battery storage if we don't have a bylaw, I guess is my question.
I think town council said if it, if it doesn't, the bylaw doesn't speak to it, then they can't build it.
Yeah, that's the question that I had asked of you before.
Right.
And that was the answer, I think we had.
Pretty sure that's what she said, yeah.
Was that in the absence of anything, it-
In the absence of anything, it can't get built.
But is it?
Right.
What's that?
Use rates.
Use rates.
What Liz said, what town council said, if our zoning bylaw doesn't specifically allow or address something, then the only way to get it approved would be to apply for a use variance, which means you needed unanimous vote of the zoning board. One person can say no to stop it, which is most likely, until a bylaw maybe is in effect with safeguards and conditions. That would be my prediction, not my legal opinion.
Right. Yeah, my concern was the same as yours. When I talked to Liz and read it, my understanding was that by default it's tied.
I think Dr. Kelly's presentation tonight was very helpful. Hopefully, a few people out there watched it, but I mean, it's still, it's one thing to do a presentation with planning board, it's quite another to be on town meeting floor with this thing.
All right, so continue to gather information, maybe have somebody else come in somewhere along the way, and maybe look towards the fall. The other thing that I reached out to town council about was the state passed the cannabis consumption bylaw. So I reached out to town council about potentially having something for this town meeting, and the short answer is no, because the state has not promulgated rules and regulations on cannabis consumption yet.
Consumption on site?
On site.
Oh, okay.
Cannabis cafe is the popular term for that. So I had a conversation with somebody from Copman Page, who, you know, went through all the options that the board could adopt, I use, or amend your current bylaw to be able to use it on site, but then, when the CCC promulgates rules in the fall, you might have to change them. So I said, so the simple answer is just wait till next spring. She said, yes. So, again, some for you guys to think about, not anything you need to do, but I had a conversation with somebody who's planning to apply for site plan review and a special permit for a site.
That kind of brings up the cannabis places in general. I think we need to look at, they're, they're more like a Dunkin' Donuts than anything else. The cars will back out onto the street, ten cars go back, and they're only staying there for like, less than ten minutes, and then driving out, people waiting in the parking lot, waiting to have an open spot and leaving. It's such a fast turnover, that the cars can't quite get in the parking lots. Probably think it would be different for the new one they're proposing down on Adams Street, because they've got a lot of, they got a huge parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
But these others, I know that, not, it's Rockland, Canada, Canada, Indiana?
Over in Rockland, they have a, they have a problem over there with people in and out. I mean, I don't think we've heard too much about BUDs, and that's the only one up and running here.
BUDs, you do have to be careful. If you're in that right wing.
Every once in a while.
Yeah.
If you're flying down Route eighteen, it might be an issue, but I, I think, I mean, I haven't heard anything from the police department saying-
Oh.
-you gotta call them in, it's, you know, we get a ton of complaints, so. And I would assume that would happen, or that they would somehow try to address it with them, if that was an issue. But this new one potentially is within the district on Route eighteen, so they're still working with the board's selection.
I'm sorry, Liz, just clarifying what you said, there's a submission being contemplated for what?
For another cannabis retail.
For another retail?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
What about consumption of alcohol premises? What do we think about those places?
I don't think it's allowed.
Have some problems with those places?
Right, right. We could open the next door to each other.
Think we're going down a slower slope.
Right.
Of alcohol premises? No, just consumption of marijuana to begin with, and then go on and drive along.
All right, that's all I got.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
I think about master play, update community, master, update MBTA communities, multifamily zoning changes.
Actually, I kind of talked into that at the front, right?
That's right, we talked about that at the beginning.
Where our interim action plan is approved, and so we're ready to go to zoning bylaw changes. So as you all recall, with our MS4 stormwater permit, the consultants who drafted that bylaw have gone back and looked at our subdivision bylaw, our zoning bylaw, and our conservation bylaw, and they've suggested some changes. I think I talked to you guys several months ago about a timetable for these, because some of the zoning ones have to be done at a town meeting. The subdivision ones, you have to hold a public hearing and you can adopt any changes, not through a town meeting, just at your own meeting after it's a public hearing that's been noticed. So I gave a set of proposed changes to Attorney Riley and sent them to town council, and Rick, I sent your stuff to town council as well, and I think you guys should have all.
Is the bylaw committee together again? The bylaw committee, is that what's looking?
No, but they wouldn't do zoning.
No, the charter review is together right now. No, these are consultants that are trying to keep us up to date with the MS4 permit, the stormwater permit. So these are the suggestions they have suggested. They're not required. They have just suggested in order to keep moving the town forward in a positive direction, compliant with the MS4 permit, you look at adopting some of these changes.
We definitely need to demystify it. It shouldn't be so complicated.
That's what I'm trying to do, is demystify it. Like, I don't want you to think these are coming out of nowhere, like I'm sitting in my office going, "Not bad at all." All right. Rick, do you want to talk about yours first, and then we can do?
So, thank you to my namesake for identifying all the areas of conflict. So what I did was I went through and basically, all those other areas where they talk about trees now would now point to this new bylaw, so that the language would all be the same. What we did was, let's see, yes, identify all trees greater than six inches in diameter, four feet above ground level. And again, that's kind of using language that already exists. You don't want to be six inches, it can be eight inches, it can be 10 inches, 14 inches, whatever, but right now, six inches at breast height, which is about four feet. Current is four and a half, yeah.
Industry standard, if you went to any nursery.
Yep.
Diameter at breast height is four and a half.
Okay.
Four and a half.
So we'll make.
DBH, they call it, diameter at breast height.
So we'll make that change to four and a half. Yeah, so then. So I made a mistake. All trees greater than six inches in diameter, as indicated on the all appropriate project documents. Applicational plant trees, that'd erase you. I did this one, I was very tired, I apologize. I think C actually needs to come out.
The only thing I saw in there was, you said, I liked the part you added, the native trees. I think the native trees that you, I say, could be, a small list could be put together in that.
Yeah, so that's, based on existing language, that will have to have a list of acceptable trees, and Liz will be the gatekeeper. I'm going to suggest striking section C, because it then conflicts with D, which is, you're not going to replant one tree for every tree you cut down. It's just, you're not going to have the space to do it. So. But the idea would be, either they can do street trees, which is, you know, two trees in front of a reproperty, or three, or they can do a grove between lots, side lots, front lots, figure that way, or they can do something else, providing that, you know, they show us why this is the best use.
Definitely like, no, we're not.
Most subdivisions, it's just not possible to save the trees that are in the English way because of the way it's, it's set up, so we're going to have to plant trees.
So the one thing in here is to specify that these need to be real hardwood trees and not, especially if you're doing the kind of the groves, that we're not looking for decorative trees, Japanese maples, that no, we're talking, these need to be, trees are going to be at least 25 feet high, and provide a canopy.
Have a long life.
Have a long life. Yeah, so I guess the question is, is this sufficient? Do you, are you okay if, you know, someone does a subdivision and all they replant back are a couple of street trees, or would you prefer that as street trees and something else in between lots or behind lots, or, I mean, you're not going to say, you know, you can't make a backyard for a house because it's a high demand thing, and people just cut down the trees anyway. So.
I think, I mean, I look at, a lot of the neighbors, I look at even my neighborhood, Shaw.
Yep.
And the way it evolved were islands of trees between each piece of property without it, maybe some trees in the front yard, but those are probably whatever left there. But it seems to be, it gives you nice privacy, it adds more trees than you could possibly put in the front yard.
Well, I think that's kind of it, is you go down Summit, you go down Colonel Hunt, you go down some of these older, more established subdivisions, there really aren't, there's not a forest in the front yard of these, these homes. It's one or two oaks, chestnuts, maples that are full mature. They cover almost the entire yard. You know, I don't think you need to put seven more new trees on a whole piece of property.
There's a neighborhood that's been established for a bunch of years in Rockland. When you come, you know where the China Plaza is across from the pond? You go up that long road, goes way up a hill, and there's two new developments, many years old, and they are, oh, it's just massive green trees, exactly like you dreamt it to be. You go, wow, this is what happens? This is not a good idea. These trees are massive and they cover over the, they're so big, and they're perfectly lined with the street, they do, but they're like a giant fence.
They almost make that street you're talking about, they almost make a canopy over the road.
Yeah.
But those subdivisions, they don't have any telephone poles and wires.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I mean, that's the thing, is you look at the old photos of Washington Street, and the entire street is covered over with, you know, old elm trees and whatever else is there. I don't think that's kind of what we're going for in terms of the old shade trees route, but someone could do it if they wanted to. But this is, the idea more is just, all right, you're going to be cutting down all these trees to build this house. What are you going to put back up? Put some thought into it. Show us why this works and this is the best use of it. That's what I'm kind of hoping to achieve here.
Evergreens allowed?
You can say hardwoods, but I would think a pine tree would be pretty.
So that's a conversation to have. What I don't want is someone to come back here and say, here's three arborvitae's. But they have their place.
I think the street trees need to be, I mean, we had a list.
We do have a list.
Rose Place that we had.
That I don't have neither of these files that say trees.
Our tree guy's not here anymore, so.
No, but I can get our tree guy, right?
And these hideous things we got planted, this parking lot back here that.
And that's a problem, is they're all the same species. And guess what happens? They're all dying now.
They're all dying.
So part of it in here is that if you have more than three trees, you have the three different types. And I know that's an added expense, but it's also healthy. So, you know, I'm not worried about an extra $500 for a $750,000 home.
No.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Riley.
I haven't read Rick's bylaw, so I.
That's fine.
Getting specific.
You don't have to.
But I wanted to note, I noticed when I was looking at our regular, subdivision regulations and zoning regulations, sometimes we use the word street tree and shade tree interchangeably, and they're really not the same thing. Like, your subdivision regulations talk about shade trees, but then we talk about putting them, you know, in that straight line, within that 10-foot tree easement, so it becomes a street tree, because it's bordering the street. So just to keep that in mind as we write these bylaws to be consistent maybe with shade. So in Rick's example, your shade trees, the proposal may be that you line them up like street trees, or your shade trees may be groves of trees, or they may be mixed in with evergreens or whatnot.
You used the same word, though.
Yeah, and I think, I'll take a look at the draft later, but as long as there's wiggle room written in there where the board can, you know, unless otherwise approved by the board type of thing. So you guys have the wiggle room to say, you know, take, take that species out, or move this tree over here, or whatever. But I think your, I think the intent of your bylaw is to give the designer at least some guidelines of, this is what we're looking for, draft it up, and then we're going to review it with you at our meeting, and we may ask you to tweak it. Right. You know, give everyone the heads up of, what are you expecting? What should I draw? And then we can work from there.
Yeah, so the subdivision bylaw also talks about tree wardens going out to inspect the shade trees, and these things don't happen anymore. So, you know.
Liz?
Who's the tree ward?
You, Liz.
Probably the chief of deputy director.
It is, I think it is.
Or it's, or it's the town manager.
It's kind of like the fence viewer.
You know, and you get the issue, and it's probably going to be beyond our lifetime, but when you get the 30, the 40-foot tall, call it an oak tree or whatever, that is 30 feet away from the house, and you get one of those scary windstorms, and, you know, you hear a crack, and then people go out like, I got to get rid of that tree before it takes down my house, you know. See, but that's 30 years from now.
Well, maybe. I got trees around me that would destroy my house.
Yeah.
Any one of them would fall down, but they're not going to fall down.
The other part is, we had one at Rose Place, well, I'm just going to cut it down anyways.
It's century.
Oh, century.
Century State, sorry.
And the other issue you have too is, and I think the board's coming aware of it too, is you may have existing, an existing forest of 40 or 50-foot tall trees, which is great, and then you have to clear some area for the construction of the road or the house or whatever. Those trees which are now on the perimeter are the weakest now, because they've been protected being in the interior of the forest. Now, when they come out to the edge of the forest, they're getting the wind that they never got before. So there's always, usually within those first two years, like it happened to my subdivision, we lose the trees on the edges when the next big windstorm comes, especially if it rained beforehand and loosened up the soils. That type of stuff is just going to happen, and the board has to recognize that, will see that happen. Not a lot to do to prevent that, but a lot of the tree guys will go out and say, that species in particular will fall, that one's a good hardy one to keep on the edge. So they can be helpful as we as we move forward. That's all.
That is one of those hard things to determine, like you said, a lot is only so big, and you need to have trees fall down. If you're struggling with it, if your lot's smaller.
Right, and you got to have a 50-foot buffer around your house with no vegetation, no trees, which is actually dumb, because in your house, it's hotter.
All right, so we want this to move forward?
Yeah.
For a public hearing in March?
Yeah, I think one other comment I'd make is that when we talked about this last time, we, the proposal stipulates a list of acceptable trees at the planning board office.
I will get that together so you'll have that for your.
When we talked about it last time, I think we said we didn't have that list.
We have a, we have a somewhat of a list.
We talked about trying to engage former chairman and his expertise to help us develop that list, so.
We'll answer that, please, in this town.
The only other thing is, I did send this to town council late in the day, and she had two comments that chapter 200-19 and 200-13, we would have to amend in the fall with the other changes going to make to the subdivision bylaws, because those are subdivision, not zoning bylaws. So if that's okay with you.
Yeah, be done separately.
Mm-hmm.
Can you have a separate article in the, in the annual meeting that does 219 and 213?
It doesn't, the subdivision bylaws don't require town meeting vote. It just, we just have to have a hearing notice and the board.
Oh.
Changes them.
Okay, that's interesting, okay.
This is, Rick is closing the zoning bylaw, sorry?
Well, several sections in here are parts of the subdivision bylaw.
Subdivision regulations you wanted to.
Yeah, so we can do that in the fall when we make the stormwater ones?
Yeah.
So we'll do that and then.
And you want to make sure this zoning bylaw changes before you try to.
Marry it to the subdivision. Yep. Well, town council would like to see that. All right, so we're good to go.
And 4C comes out, right? 4C comes out.
4C is out?
Yep.
And I'm going to change where it says four feet to four and a half feet?
Yep.
Okay.
And then in that same paragraph, there's a reference to, there's a six and an eight.
Six?
Just change it to six.
Six inches?
Yep. And at the very last line, I think there's eight and an eight.
Eight inches, that should be six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to 17534.
C?
C.
Which one, I'm sorry?
17534C, which you didn't have any.
This packet of that.
Topsoil's? Oh, sorry.
Again, does this only apply to projects that require site plan approval? So if I'm building a duplex, I don't have to abide by this?
No, because it's not contained within the site plan regs. It's in the zoning regs. Right, site plan's 175-77.
Okay. I'm going to read it really quickly. Section A of, sorry, 17534A says, except when incidental to and reasonably required in connection with the construction of approved use of structure or an approved subdivision on the same site as prescribed previously, no removal, sale, trade, or other use of sand gravel in excess of 30 cubic yards shall be allowed except by special permission from the board of selectmen. So if there's been an approval of an approved structure or an approved subdivision, then you can remove the gravel, because that's been part of the approval process.
What about section C?
C.
This is to add three lines to section C.
What are you adding?
Topsoil and/or soils with high organic content suitable to support vegetation shall not be removed from the site unless approved through the special permit process. Topsoil shall be spread across all disturbed areas at a depth sufficient to sustain vigorous vegetation, vegetation growth upon completion of site disturbance activities. And 14, where construction activities have compacted soils within vegetated or landscaped areas, measures shall be taken to restore natural soil permeability such as rototilling of soils. I didn't know this was going to be.
It sounds similar to what conservation's looking at when you, when you have wetland areas. I'll have to read that. I don't disagree with it, but most, so for a larger project, what this is kind of talking about, actually, again, if it was already improved construction, it wouldn't really apply, but let's say you were, it's really looking at someone who's going out there to mine, mine sand and gravel. You're trying to create your own pit or take some sand and gravel out of an area, then this applies. We have to be able to control what you're taking out. You're not building anything, you're just removing sand and gravel, apparently.
But the special permit is with the board of selectmen?
That's what it says. I'm looking at it online. But then, the application shall be filed with the selectmen. The selectmen, the applicant will also file with the planning board and the selectmen of site plan. Within 45 days, the planning board shall evaluate the application and the site plan and shall submit an advisory report to the, to the board of selectmen, and the selectmen will make the eventual. This, this fill permit and dump permit, this has been really confusing over the last couple of years. There's been a lot of editing and reiterations to the point that I don't think anyone remembers where it started from, never mind where we're trying to go. Like, 30 yards is.
That's nothing.
It's not a lot, right. But I think the intent is. Yeah, the intent is that, I can't think of, you know, all right, let's just say it's Griffin's Dairy is a big sandy area, and someone wants, and it's privately owned, and someone wants to start digging the gravel and removing it, this is going to kick in. You need a permit to do this.
Oh, some of them might be stripping the land for this.
Yeah, and this, I think what Liz just read, the added language is that you scrape off the topsoil and you put it in a pile, and after you're done digging, you go back and you spread the topsoil and loosen it up so grass will start to grow again. Typically, that happens anyhow. Most contractors, you know, everything is, is worth something, and they try to mitigate their expenses, so they'll put this topsoil to the side. Um, so I don't think I have any immediate objection to that, it's pretty much happens naturally, but um, I'll certainly.
Just in case.
Glad to read it before your March hearing.
Okay. I have a note to send it to you.
Oh, great, thanks.
So is that something you want to move forward with?
Uh, for the time being, but willing to reconsider that later.
Okay.
And plus, you could write this in any language and I don't think any general contractor will even bother reading it, but uh, you know, usually don't.
I'm just looking to know what you want in the warrant. Or potentially in the warrant, because that.
Where?
That ship is sailing on Friday.
Where did that come from?
That was part of the MS four stormwater permit people.
Can we move on to one seventy-five thirty-eight D? By adding line D.
Did you get that one? I didn't send you that one either.
Okay.
I'm just moving to the concept.
I started with section one, so I found forty-three.
This is just um, one seventy-five thirty-eight D by adding line D, shared parking is encouraged for commercial and retail use based on differing peak demands.
So central business district is North Abington and Abington Center?
Yes.
All right.
I mean, I'm, well, it's, sometimes this is done for when you went, like, like, no, Abington Center downtown.
Central business district?
Where you have to uh, include what's parking, like, that's something that happens anyway with, like a barber shop there, they don't have any parking, but they can include what's on the street and whatever else they have, use, use for and prove that it's not being used by someone else.
I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's already happening.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Right, that parking lot across from Bemis, um, is, is being.
That's the churches.
Right, it's the churches and um, but it's being shared.
Town has a lease agreement with it?
Yeah, the town has a lease agreement.
There is something similar to that language already with, with combined parking. Cooperative estab, yeah, one seventy-five forty-six, it's called the cooperative establishment operation of parking areas. Required spaces for any number of uses may be provided in a combine, in a combine, combined lot or lots, provided the number of spaces in the combined facility should not be less than the sum of those required for the individual uses and allowance may be made upon formal determination by the planning board for night use or for separate and distinct working shifts and further provided also that the lot or lots be within three hundred feet of principal building served. So basically, a zoning bylaw say that if you're going to build something, you have to provide parking on site, or you can provide it on an off-site parking lot as long as it's within three hundred feet of your site. And this says, and that can be a shared parking lot as long as um, you know, you have kind of opposite things, like you have a nighttime business and a daytime business, great, you can share that parking lot, but if you had two daytime businesses, then it has to be big enough to comply with what your daytime needs are.
Right.
So that language is kind of already there, I think that's what they're inserting, right, that you encourage combined use.
Is that general parking or is that for a specific zoning district?
Any number of uses, it's section one seventy-five forty-six.
So this is specific to central business district?
Hmm.
Just, which I assume is because.
Yeah, I mean.
It's supposed to be a.
Shared parking is, is encouraged.
Not as much parking, more, more walking.
Again, they use the word in, in some of their proposals, encourage, we encourage you to use impervious, we encourage you to share parking. Zoning bylaws are usually not written that way, it's you shall or you won't, you know. It's good to put it in there because it just gives you an indication of what the town's mentality is and if you can figure a way to share it, all right, put it on the plan. Um, we, I think we have some other language elsewhere where, I know we have other language elsewhere, the planning board can approve a plan with lower than typically required parking spaces, the number of parking spaces, if you can show why. My traffic generation manual and there's even provisions where we say, we're only going to build eighty out of the required hundred spaces, but we're going to reserve that area for, to add twenty more spaces in the future if the building inspector says we created a problem.
We've done it before.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we have.
Avalon, right?
Yeah.
Havana, whatever.
Havana has that.
Havana has that.
And that's already in our bylaw, so.
Yeah, I think that the trend is swinging way back towards less parking, they're realizing just, there's way too much parking for the most part, for ninety-nine percent of the days, there's just vast oceans of empty asphalt.
A good target.
That never get used. Well, I could read, in the sun, but don't have enough though. I mean, I think it's, which ones town don't have enough.
I thought this would be more about talking about, if you get two businesses next to each other, that they, to put a driveway between them so you could go into that without having to drive out onto the street, you go into a lot that's not being used.
Yep.
I don't know how that works with everything, like the uh, the daycare center or a group of teens, none of those kids drive, obviously, and none of the parents stay, so they have a huge parking lot, but it's empty all the time.
Well, and the, the Santander Bank on the corner of Washington, it means, there's sixty spaces sitting there that are never used. What, what is the point of that?
Right, and a lot of times back then, it was, let's build as much as we can while we have the equipment on site, because it's going to be harder to come back in later. And so they would overbuild until stormwater management came into effect and said, okay, the more paving you have, now you got to put in catch patients and underground drainage, so that started to control it. And now, it, this group here is even going more so to try to, where can we limit pavement? Which is a good thing, but there's always a balance with making sure that parking lot's sufficient for the use that it's serving and you're not telling people to park on the street, especially during winter.
Well, they can't.
Yeah, right, I mean, but the business doesn't want to lose customers either because they can't find a parking spot. Um, so it.
If you don't think we need this, then we just skip over it and.
No, I mean, the language is fine, it's more just the whole general approach, I'd, I'd rather some business, some proponents come in more with a, we're not going to build as much because we don't think we're going to need it, instead of us having to say, do you really need all that parking?
And I think, you know, when it talks about combined uses, that naturally happens if you're building, let's just say, simplest version of strip mall, we have three, four units, those are combined uses, so you're gonna, and right now, the parking calculation's based on square foot, basically of the building, you know, one for every three hundred square feet, so it says, okay, you need thirty-two spaces, so you have to design it for thirty-two spaces. You know, maybe there's going to be wiggle room.
But it would drive me batty if there was someone who was looking to invest in Abington Center and said, I can't fit twelve spaces onto my lot, meanwhile, there's two parking lots next door within walking, easy walking distance.
Right.
With sixty unused spaces, that's never full, it's like, that's kind of where I want to make sure we're having that flexibility, so that, you know, if there's a really good use for.
Yep.
Uh, the old Mary Lou's or whatever it used to be, but they technically don't have more parking spaces.
And you can, as I mentioned, as long as it's within three hundred feet, you can do that. Now, it's up to the owner to make a lease agreement with the parking lot owner, to kind of make that work.
I mean, would it be better if maybe we took this D and put it up under parking requirements, so it's not necessarily a requirement, but it um, alerts people reading this that.
Under section forty-six, you mean?
No, under seventy-eight three D, which says parking requirements in the central business district, if we just moved it up there. So it's not a requirement, but it indicates that we are encouraging shared parking on our peak uses.
I, I think that makes sense.
Right, so at least people reading it would say, oh, okay, maybe if I work out something with Santander, I can, that can be the shared use and it's not bound by three hundred feet. So if somebody like in your office or around the corner.
Yep.
Right?
It could stay where it's at and accomplish that, right, no matter where you put it.
All right, well, I'll just.
It's just a suggestion more than anything.
Well, actually, you're, you're building all, they all share parking back there.
Right, um, and obviously, it behooves a business owner, commercial developer, to share parking, you know, have one parking lot instead of three separate ones. Um, and it's easier for, especially if the businesses is a type where you, you know, I'm going to park and run into this business and then I'm going to walk over to that other business, then great, you know. Um, we kind of want to give people the, the flexibility, we, let's say this, we don't want to mandate a separate parking lot for each business.
Right.
That just doesn't happen. We already allow that by our bylaw. Um, and I'm looking at this as, with my moderator, I had on too, saying, you know, I don't want to get so picky when we're putting in encouragement language in seven different bylaws and having seven different articles for this, when it kind of already says that, you know what I mean? So which ones are important to put in and where should we put them? Or is it superfluous and we don't need it? We can talk about it in more detail at the hearing, that's just my concern.
Yeah, I'd lean towards the latter. This, this kind of non-binding language, we encourage something.
Yeah, and I'll just add it.
It's.
To the parking requirement piece.
It's very close to meaningless language.
Yeah.
But it would let people know that.
We encourage you to be nice.
We want you to share the parking.
But you don't, you don't have to.
You don't have to.
We could always go back to the definition.
Right? We prefer.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that, I guess that's the intent, right, to reduce, to reduce impervious surface, so.
Yeah.
If you could share your parking lot, your parking requirements with somebody else, I think that's sort of, at the end of the day.
What we'd like to see.
We'd like you to see them sharing instead of.
Okay, moving on.
That's almost a given with the central business district.
Right, right, it's.
Continuing as parking main, one seventy-three, one seventy-five forty-three.
One seventy-five forty-three.
Space.
What is ten D mean?
Area requirement.
Supposed to be crossed out nine, crossed out ten, put nine, something like that.
Oh.
But we just didn't get the crossed out.
You didn't get that either?
I got it.
You did?
See, I, I was thinking, unless you got a mini car, nine, a nine-foot spot is really hard to get out of.
People hate nine-foot spots.
Would I, what, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Um, I often, I looked at the comments made by the group that Liz referenced and then I added my, my comments and essentially, they wanted to, our, our bylaw right now requires a ten-by-eighteen parking space is our baseline parking space. They suggested it be a nine-by-eighteen parking space. I'm further suggesting it be nine-by-twenty, as much as I hate to do that, because it makes it harder for some of my clients to design a parking lot, the reality is vehicles nowadays, especially with a lot more SUVs and pickup trucks, they're longer.
Those big quad cab pickup trucks, those things are ginormous.
They are, um, and to the point where I was literally Googling, Googling average size of cars and trucks and all, most cars are six, six and a half wide, but some pickup trucks are eight feet wide. So in any event, nine foot wide is allowed in several towns and I copied the zoning provisions down the bottom of the page from several local towns, just to give you an idea, and it's kind of a mishmash, there's nine feet, but, so my suggestion was, I think we would all agree, let's say, in a residential setting, you know, for a couple of condominiums, nine foot's probably fine, because you park your car overnight and then you drive it away in the morning, there's not a lot of cars opening and opening. But then you look at, you know, a CVS or a Target or somewhere where, you know, retail, Dunkin' Donuts, where you're running in and out and there's a lot of cars pulling in and opening doors, maybe you want ten-foot spaces there. Uh, as much as you want to try to get as many customers in there, you also want more safety and, and less collisions. So what I wrote was, the standard would be nine feet by twenty feet for perpendicular angles and then spaces for high-volume commercial uses may require a ten-foot width for the most heavily used areas of the parking lot, which gives the planning board the right to say, okay, we see on your site plan, you have nine-foot wide spaces everywhere, we want to have these thirty spaces that are closest to the door to be ten feet wide, because those are going to be the most often used, the ones farther away, we're not so worried about because that's kind of more people who are parking for a while.
I got enough things in my car already.
Right?
I don't need to make them smaller.
And the same thing for uh, parallel spaces, we currently have ten by twenty-two, a lot of towns do nine by twenty-two, nine foot wide by twenty-two, parallels, not as much a concern, and the driveway aisle, I suggested right now, it says twenty-five foot wide, in exchange for going to a twenty-foot long parking space instead of eighteen, I was suggesting we go from a twenty-foot wide aisle to twenty-four, and twenty-four seems to be pretty consistent with a lot of towns in the area too.
Anything smaller, that's, it's tricky if you got a truck.
Right, to back in and out of.
Yeah.
And I, but I think again, with the twenty-foot wide spaces, you're inherently widening your aisle to, because most cars are not twenty feet long.
Right.
But you provide the space for that.
Yeah.
Um, just, those are just my thoughts regarding it, and then I also included on the second page to that section, just reference to um, the surfacing requirements, which basically says, um, one and two-family dwellings don't have to pave their driveway technically, but everything else does unless otherwise voted by the planning board. So, commercial buildings, multifamily have to have paved parking, we, we see it all over the place, so that's really the default in New England, you pave your parking spot. But this, the language that you're looking at tonight also has some things that are being added where we're encouraging to say, you know, maybe on the fringes of the parking lot, you don't have to have full pavement, you could have parking spaces, but try to use some pervious pavements over there or whatever. So I think some of these changes that are being suggested are good, but, and it gives the planning board a little more authority and ability to open up a discussion as to how you're going to really design this parking lot. Hundred percent pavement, ninety percent pavement, minimum ninety, nine-foot wide spaces, but we have the right to ask you for ten if we think that this is a heavy, you know, in and out situation, heavy volume. That was just my suggestion, just, I think when you guys have more flexibility, but yet you tell the designer what the baseline is, that kind of gets an effective site plan review process going.
Okay, I know the first thing I would look at if I was doing a quick site plan to see, I'd do a test hit plan, would be to find out if they, how many small cars they allow, you know, just try to find out what measurements I could work with and try to, as many of those as you can, you know, basically try to fill it out.
Right.
So, yeah.
And the, different uses require different numbers of parking spaces and theoretically, some would require different sized parking spaces.
Yeah.
But I think.
Plus.
Let's say this, if we leave it at ten foot wide, okay, there's been a number of instances, and I think even we did it, I know we did, the parking spaces out in front of the town hall ever are nine feet wide, and I think Target's nine feet wide, but you have to get a zoning variance to go from the ten-foot minimum in the bylaw to drop it down to nine, which is kind of the standard in most towns. So we're suggesting rewrite it, make it nine feet, but the planning board has the ability to require ten feet as part of the approval process. No variance required, but you guys can say, we're not approving this unless you make these ten feet wide.
Okay, we're going to move on to one seventy-five forty-seven C by amending one five residential from minimum of ten feet to nine feet.
You have forty-seven B also, right?
Hope they're out of sync.
So forty-seven C is the next one on your list?
No, it's, I, I put them on a board.
Yeah, but, but they have that.
Yeah, they have that. Wanted to make sure everybody was awake.
So, what are we doing, B or C?
What do you want to do, C or B?
Let's do B first.
All right.
B?
B.
B is embedded.
Where what grade doesn't exceed ten percent from where to where?
Yeah, I don't have any objection to what they proposed, I just tried to rewrite the introductory language just for the bylaw.
Oh, that wasn't your suggestion.
So basically, this is, this is stating out loud that if you have a one- or two-family house, we encourage you to consider not just simply using a hundred percent paving, but using some sort of porous material for your driveway or at least a part of it, as long as it's not on a hill, then they want you to pave it.
Is that a yes or a no?
Uh, I just, do we need to specify how they're measuring the grade?
What do you mean, the percentage?
Well, more is, is it from width to width, from top to bottom, is it any point, anywhere in the driveway has a ten percent grade, you can't use it or?
Uh, not anywhere, but you get over a certain point and it's really difficult though for anybody, you know, a handicap to walk up it.
And I think it's saying, you, they encourage the porous materials where the grade does not exceed ten percent, so in the case, if you had a long driveway where part of it So in the case, if you had a long driveway where part of it is on a greater-than-10% slope, you wouldn't use porous. But if it flattens out for the rest of it, you could. Or, I mean, they can do it now anyhow with one-to-two families, but this is just, again, encouraging it.
Right, so we're back to just encouraging instead of, you will.
You can change that to shall.
Or die.
Let's just say this, if you did not make this revision, a homeowner can still do this. Because the other one that I quoted earlier says, you don't have to pave a one- or two-family house driveway. This is kind of just putting in writing that we encourage you not to pave it.
If anybody wants to remove snow, we're going to pave the driveway.
That's the, that's one of the issues with New England. So, it's up to the board. If you want to put this article in and put this encouraging language in, great. It doesn't really change anything. If you said it's superfluous and not needed, let's, great, doesn't change anything.
I see their intent, they're just trying to encourage people, but it doesn't do anything.
And frankly, one- and two-unit driveways don't come in front of the planning board anyhow. This is a zoning issue.
Right.
I'd skip this one.
All right, so skip. So, about to.
Have to see.
See.
Yeah, so the proposal was just to change our current bylaw, which says a driveway width for a one-to-five-family residential use. Currently, it says the driveway has to be a minimum of 10 feet wide and maximum of 20 feet wide. They are suggesting that the minimum be reduced to nine feet. My comment was, I think you should keep it at 10 feet for the reasons I stated. For example, some trucks are eight feet wide, so if you have a nine-foot driveway, you really don't have a lot to give. This is measured at the point where it crosses the front lot line. So you also want to make sure that when the teenager's back out of the driveway, they're not going over the curb. They've got a little wiggle room coming out, they have a 10-foot width. It's not a big deal, 10 feet, nine feet, but for the reasons I stated, I think I would keep it at 10 feet wide.
I think our fire chief would want it at 10 feet wide, too.
That's probably true, too.
As wide as the ambulances are getting. Especially with some houses with some of the longer driveways. Most of the time, they park out in front, I understand, but there are houses where they have to go down the driveway.
Yeah, and the ambulance is their widest vehicle.
Yeah.
So we're skipping?
I'd leave it at, leave it alone.
Okay.
Skipping that change.
Yep.
Moving on to 175, 50, visual relief for lots.
So, the group that's working with Stormwater had just suggested to add the red language at the end. This is regarding buffers between parking lots and streets. They were just suggesting that it say, landscape areas are encouraged to incorporate stormwater treatment measures to treat runoff from the adjacent parking areas. Which essentially is them saying, hey, if you have a grass strip between the street and the parking lot, maybe you could make that a swale, so it could absorb some of the water, that type of thing. Obviously, you can do that now, but they're putting language in there to encourage it.
Encouraging, which makes sense.
I put language in, which is the underlined red language, that, I was just trying to further define. I think the existing language about the number of trees in that same landscape strip is kind of, can be interpreted too many different ways. So this has always bothered me, so I tried to be more specific. Right now, it says, you have to have at least five trees per 200 linear feet. We'll talk about the dimensions in a second. And it's, what 200 linear feet? 200 feet of frontage or 200 feet of the length of the driveway? Because you're going to have, you know, if you have 120 feet of frontage and you have a 20-foot driveway entrance, and then you have a 20-foot exit, then you have 80 feet left of island space. So are we looking at five trees per 200 based on that 80-foot measurement, or on the entire frontage measurement? There's always been kind of that question. I've always said it's the island measurement. So I tried to get more specific to say that each buffer strip, which is more than 30 feet long, a street tree having a diameter of breast height of at least three inches shall be planted in a ratio of at least one tree per 30 feet of buffer strip length. A street tree shall not be placed within 20 feet of any street corner or any location which may create a hazard conflict with utilities or impair sightlines for drivers or pedestrians, or as the number or location of such trees may otherwise be approved. Which again, is that language in there that gives you guys the right to move a tree out of tree. It can't be within 20 feet of an intersection, because that's another part of our zoning bylaw, which already says that, because you want to be able to cause, to turn a corner without having a tree blocking their field of vision. One tree for every 30 feet was just, I was trying to imagine, if you have a 30-foot-long strip, you want to have at least one tree. But you don't want to have it at the end of the strip, again, because you have cars trying to pull in and out of those driveways. But once you get over 30 feet, if you're at 40 feet, you know, now we might have two trees. It's just a formula. I suggested you guys can tweak that as much as you want. And again, you guys will be looking at, what type of tree is it? Do we agree with where they're being located? You know, depending on whether this street is a curve or is a straight shot, might determine where trees go or how many trees go.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern, is if it's a 20-foot buffer strip, could they argue that if you have to have a 20-foot setback from any street corner, that means you don't have to have any trees? Because no matter where you stand, you're within 20 feet of a curb.
If you're.
It's a 30-foot strip, let's say it's out here in the parking lot.
Yep.
You don't have to have any trees, because you're always within 20 feet of a corner.
A street corner, you mean?
Yeah.
But, and I said, again, though, as the number or location may otherwise be approved. I think if something like that happened, which kind of defeated our formula, and they came in and said, I don't need to put any trees up there, you guys could say, well, we're going to require you, if you want site plan approval, we need a tree here and a tree there. Or you could say, you abide by the bylaw, but we think it's creating a problem. We want you to take this tree out. We're going to approve the plan. The bylaws is you're supposed to put four trees in. We're going to tell you it's okay with the three, because of the way this is laid out. You have that wiggle room. But again, this gives the designer the guidance of what to put in front of you to start the discussion with. Just a thought. And again, we'll get into it deeper in March when we have time to absorb this.
Okay.
Yes? Do you want me to incorporate Mr. Riley's language into the march?
I use that, sorry, I use that same three inches at diameter of breast height, which I think is consistent with what other sections say.
What we talked about earlier tonight. I'm okay with that language.
Gives a lot more guidance with that particular analogy.
Yeah, like I said, please feel free to edit it, you know, come back with much with better wording, it just might.
Yeah, I advanced it, I might want to reword it a little bit, but I don't want to advance it.
Well, I guess, because we're going to advertise, and I'll have to have something for that, it's better we have more than less, because I think you can always take it out, but it's harder to add other stuff back in, because that's not what you advertise, even though it's a role we carry to do that.
Right.
Throw it all in the sink and then. Right.
Going to move on to 175, 50, visual relief for lots.
We just did that, that was the one.
Yeah, 152.
52.
52.
52.
So your consultants, I guess, suggested three things. One was to amend, this is the Table of Off-Street Parking Regulations, calculations of how many parking spaces you need for the different types of uses, whether they're single-family users, or a retail store, or a church. So they want to change Section F, which is a one-family house. Currently, it says you have to have at least three parking spaces in a driveway or off the street per dwelling unit. They wanted to change it to two. I disagreed with that change. I think most families, it's wiser to have room for three. Now, if they have a garage, each bay counts as one space. So a two-car garage is already two spaces, and then the driveway is likely the third, fourth, and fifth space, depending on how long or how wide the driveway is. So most houses, as they're naturally designed, comply with the requirement for three parking spaces for a dwelling unit. Additionally, because it's New England and because we have street parking bans, it's important that each house or dwelling unit has enough parking off-street available on a normal day. If you have a Super Bowl party, okay, you're going to have people on the street. But you and your wife and your teenage drivers should be able to fit in your driveway. So the minimum is three. You can obviously have a longer driveway and have parking for four, or five, or six. But design-wise for new construction is a minimum of three. Minimum of two, I think you're asking for trouble. And then they proposed adding Section S to more specifically designed professional office buildings, and Section T to more specifically defined shopping centers. And later, when you read my comments, I suggested these are kind of superfluous and add very little to the equation, because, for example, professional office buildings would require three spaces per 1,000 feet of, square feet of gross floor area. But currently, that same use elsewhere in the chat would require one space per 300 square feet, which translates to three spaces per 900 feet. And they're suggesting that we say three spaces per 1,000 feet. I'm saying, what's, you know, it's not a huge change here, so why are we adding this?
On the opposite end of this is like, when I'm running out calculations for how many people are going to be in the buildings, I can figure out how many spaces they need and door size. They don't use this mark. That 1,000 square feet would be divided by 100. That says that there are 10 people in that space. So you get 10 people with three spaces to divide it against.
Yeah.
See, that's what I mean, even in the retail, calls for a hell of a lot more people than they provide parking for.
Right, and now remember, these are minimum parking requirements. You know, like Target put in more than that was required, because that's their building design. They don't want to have any issues with parking, and they want the ability to display things outside, which they never really did, but they have the ability to do it. So these are all minimums. They're always allowed to have maximums. Of course, more pavement means more drainage, and they have lot coverage issues. There's a lot of things that, you know, restrict you. And that's, you know, multifamily housing is a great example of it. You know, I have clients come in, say, how many can I, how many units can I fit here? I said, well, first you've got to tell me how many bedrooms, because the bedrooms tells me how many parking spaces. And the parking spaces tells me how much pavement. And how much pavement tells me lot coverage. And you're going to have site plan review, and you're going to have engineering. I said, the more units, the more bedrooms, the more parking, the more expensive, all that stuff. So it becomes a driving force that, and we are, most of our zoning bylaws are geared to encourage one- and two-family, oh, sorry, one- and two-bedroom units for multiple reasons. Smaller parking, smaller lots, less schoolchildren, higher tax revenue. But you can, again, take a look at this later, but I don't think that the change of wording by adding this professional office or shopping centers really changes the equation that already exists in this bylaw, or it just doesn't change it in a substantial way. But something to consider. But I would, personally, I would not change the dwelling unit minimum to two spaces for a house in a driveway. I think three should be required. And if for some reason, there's a new house on a small lot with a lot of ledge that can't fit the three parking spaces, they can come in for a variance. But that would be a real unique situation where you don't, knowing that the house is already supposed to be 35 to 40 feet off for frontage, your driveway being 40 feet long means automatically there's at least two parking spaces there. Maybe you should have room for a third, though, for the typical American family, which really has four or five cars.
Makes sense.
Yes or no to move forward?
Not in suburban family.
What, yes, suburban family, right.
I would go forward, there being three spaces, I don't think we should change that. Are you talking, just that one, or are you all together?
The whole sheet, I mean, you can ditch it and march if you want.
Yeah, I'm suggesting don't adopt any of the changes, but I guess the question is.
If you guys want to look it over and then hold the hearing on.
Put it on the hearing schedule to discuss it in more detail. I don't care.
I would leave it, I would have a tendency to agree with Mr. Riley. I wouldn't make these changes, but.
I'd concur with that. I'll agree.
Yeah.
Okay. You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Let's move on to 175, 53.
Entitled Reduction in Parking Requirements. This is a section we mentioned earlier in the evening, which says that the planning board by special permit can revise what the standard parking space number requirement is if, currently it says three things, if the applicant can demonstrate by the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual that the required amount of spaces is way too many. Or you can also reduce the number of paved spaces if you will keep open those spaces. Or a lot of times, it's done together. You agree to reduce number of spaces, but you reserve a green area that you can add more parking later. And it says at the end, the building inspector is the one that can make that decision. If two years after occupancy, there's a lot of parking problems, you can go back and say, you know those 18 parking spaces we said you didn't have to pave? You've got to pave 10 of them now, or all 18, or whatever the situation is. They're adding a clause that just says, areas near major transit stops may be considered for reduced parking requirements should the applicant demonstrate that lower requirements are appropriate. Again, it's kind of already inherent in what the wording is. I'm just suggesting, they suggested plugging it in as part B and renumbering the sections. I said, why don't you just put it at the end? It's just a little bit easier to, we're going to add a fourth section, instead of we're going to insert it and then renumber the remaining ones.
This isn't really.
Form of substance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's another suggestion.
Yeah, we don't really have any need for this.
So, we know that Section 3A is going to introduce the whole notion of buy right. So.
Only multi-units buy right, right? Our parking requirements and all that stuff are still, well, it'll be what you guys want it to be.
So there is no change to the parking requirements in this commuter rail zoning bylaws?
No, we're going to have to adopt a zoning bylaw that the essence of is that we allow multi-unit dwellings buy right.
In the area surrounding.
A half mile of.
The commuter rail station.
Yeah, and under the scope of work that we got today, they're going to give us four options as to how that could lay out.
So that notion of buy right gives the developer tremendous model leverage, right? And does that extend to parking?
Sounds like no.
No, right? So I mean, you could still require whatever we're requiring currently, we could still require. I mean, is that going to be reasonable? I don't know.
Yeah. I think this is consistent with the spirit of reducing parking near the transit stations.
Right, and I think you're right, that whatever this 3A final language is, we want to, you want to make sure that there isn't any new language about parking, that not only can you, are you allowed to put multifamily in this area, but you also have lower parking thresholds. That would be a new thing, right? If it doesn't mention parking, then all these parking thresholds are still there. And that analysis that I just mentioned about, okay, how many bedrooms, how many parking spaces, how much pavement, that all still applies.
I'd still be a little skeptical to reduce the parking.
Yeah, and in this section here.
It's because of where we live.
Right, in this section here, they can only be reduced by special permit from the board, which requires four out of five of you to vote for it. So they have to demonstrate why there's a legitimate reason to reduce from the base requirement. They can build more, if they want to build more, as long as they have the drainage and the lot coverage and buffers and all that. So I guess the question to this is, do you want to move forward and add this, or is it superfluous or whatever? Talk about it in March, or don't bother at all?
I don't have any problem with this, the way it's worded. It puts the burden on the applicant to demonstrate that low requirements are appropriate. So that gives us the leverage or option to say, you have to demonstrate it to our satisfaction. The answer is no.
It might be site-specific. One site, you could, and one another, site, no, it's not going to work here.
Yeah. So it doesn't take away the board's discretion?
It kind of almost already says that, other than, but whatever, it's good.
But if this all helps us with our stormwater bylaw compliance issues, then great, we're all headed in the same direction.
Yeah, moving on to 175, 63, Surface Water Drainage.
They just added some language. I provided to you down the bottom of this page, the existing language in Section 175, 63, which just basically says that when you design something, you can't create any water runoff or problems with your neighbors in general. Their suggestion was to break the two sentences into part A and C, and they inserted a new B and D. And B just, again, recommends that you direct your drainage to suitable-sized stormwater treatment devices, which is inherently part of site plan review. Kind of says the obvious. And then D, the new language, says, green roofs can be used on commercial, industrial, and similar construction for treatment of roofed-up runoff, should appropriate site conditions of construction allow for feasible implementation. So it's just kind of a reminder, like, hey, why don't you try green roofs instead of using gutters? Again, it's, if you did not add this language, it doesn't change a thing. Because someone could still propose a green roof for you, and they're required already to discharge their stormwater into some sort of treatment device. The way I read it, I'm not an engineer, but seems straightforward. So I don't think it hurts, I don't think it changes. It depends if you want to get up and explain this article. And I also changed the introductory wording that would appear in the warrant.
I don't see the point of B, but I do like having D in there, because it could jig somebody's memory to say, "Oh, wait, I can, I can do that. That might make sense."
So, we could just make it A and B and leave the current language alone and not split it up?
Yep.
And then add D, which would then be B.
You could just add the green roof language as a third sentence to the existing text to make it really, you didn't, you don't have to break it out. They, they broke it out into A, B, C, D.
Right, so I was thinking, just save this and make it A and then add B as a green roof. Or just add green roof, you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Just make it one, three-sentence paragraph.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
However you want to do it. It's all, again, format and, just so it's easy to...
I don't know why you need to tell them, "Hey, you can have a green roof." Slap them upside down.
I, I think at the end of the day, if, if it says this stuff...
It helps?
We, we get a little pat on the head.
Oh.
Right? Little Cindy Lou Who who has no more than two might get a candy cane, right?
So, they have to decide between a green roof or a solar roof, one or the other.
Right. And it's all gonna, it's all, I mean, when someone's doing, George, doing the drainage stuff, it's all revolves around money anyways. The green roof's not gonna do it. But if it helps us with our stormwater, that's good.
Suber, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time you took to look at all of these.
My pleasure. I really enjoy it.
Is there any other business to come before the board tonight?
Um, I just want to remind the board that they are invited to the selectmen's meeting next Monday, and that the budget discussion with the board of selectmen for the planning board budget will be on 2/27/23 at 6:30 PM, if anybody would care to attend.
And I, I would just like to put in an advert for Citizens Planner Training Collaborative Conference on March 18th at the Holy Cross. And I know Liz has sent out the, uh, motion. I'm, I'm on the committee, and we've got a really good program planned, and it'll be to see which sessions I moderate, so you'd want to avoid, no, you'd want to attend.
So, they get a front row seat?
Yeah, they get a front row seat.
What does registration close?
Uh... I think we can almost write up until the end.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Get you in.
That's what I was saying, Liz, is that it's still far off on the horizon.
Well, we're going, we're going up to ninety-five bucks this year, but it's worth it. You know, the food cost, food cost for that's like twenty grand. Yeah. Both food and everything Holy Cross wants. It's, uh...
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Riley's a Holy Cross alum, but, uh, but, uh, he gets an awful lot of money for conferences.
They have facilities to maintain.
Yeah, we hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for watching this tonight. Thank you for staying, bearing with us and hearing all this discussion.